You have all commission and staff, I presume?
Good evening. I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Planning Commission for December 14th, 2022. Could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Landris?
Here.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Here.
Commissioner Raskin?
Sorry, I'm muted. Yes, I'm here.
And Sherri's.
Present. Moving along in our agenda, the first item up is Director's Report.
Good evening, Commission. Happy holidays to everybody.
Happy holidays.
Same to you.
Coming up at the next Planning Commission meeting, which will be after the first of the year, is conditional use permit for 925 Wilshire. That's a a new sports bar at the corner of Wilshire and 10th. January 11th will be the Planning Commission's formal recommendation on the housing element implementation. And then January 18th, we have a additional use permit at 3016 Main Street. And then also Planning Commission review and recommendation to City Council on the private outdoor space provisions that were implemented as part of COVID, and this effort will be to consider what aspect of those are made permanent as we move forward. City Council actions on December 13th. The council adopted an emergency interim zoning ordinance to allow 100% affordable housing projects within a half mile of major transit stops to request waivers and reductions of development standards. This takes effect immediately, and then it's good for 60 days. The one change that the council made last night is they exempted the Pico neighborhood from this provision. And Jing might want to give a little more detail on how that works. Also, updates to the lobbying ordinance on second reading. Council adopted the lobbying ordinance a few weeks ago. Typically, second readings are just that, second reading, not a lot of discussion. But in this case, the council had some additional recommendations and changes, which then means that the ordinance reverts to first reading. And then it comes back, it will come back in the future for a second reading. And then upcoming city council meetings, January 10th and January 24th. So that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Lambert first, and then Landris? You're muted, my friend?
The 100% affordable housing in Pico, is that only new construction?
It's, yeah, waivers for new projects, so I mean, I guess theoretically, it probably, I mean, could be an addition, but typically it's new construction.
Good. So acquisition or rehab, unless they needed one of those things, would not be affected by it?
I assume that's correct, but I was saying, and and or hiding, didn't we?
That's correct, yeah. The scope of the IZO was just to allow, the city was opting in to allow 100% affordable housing projects within half mile of major transit to request those waivers. Under prior versions of state density bonus law, the, those kinds of projects were actually prohibited from requesting waivers because they had no maximum controls on density. So this was something that the city could opt into doing. So that is the scope of the IZO. It does not affect acquisition.
Is that, is that consistent with state density bonus law? It's 1763?
It's not 1763, it's some other version. 1763 had to do with the things that added 100% affordable housing, you know, all the different incentives in there. And that was when actually it was specific about, you know, no waivers to a project that has no maximum controls on density, and then subsequent changes to state density bonus law added in the option for cities to allow those projects to request waivers. So that is what the IZO is.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Landris, did you ask, you're up next.
I did have a question, and I, David and Jing, I emailed you because I just only and I just I was hoping that you could give a clarification so the public knows what is the accurate, and we all know because if, my question was, there's an article in the Santa Monica Lookout, so everybody knows the context. There's an article in the Santa Monica Lookout that states at the end that builders remedy projects come to the Planning Commission. I'm pretty sure that's a typo.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify. Yeah, I saw your email. So because the builders remedy projects are, you know, they don't meet code, they exceed code, and the land use settlement, they're not subject to the administrative approval process. So it does mean that those projects will come to the Planning Commission as development review permits. And that's how we'll be processing those.
But aren't we oblig, isn't the city obligated to approve them?
Well, it's, you know, I guess it's similar to you know, requirements for other housing projects where, you know, when the commission sees those projects, you have, you don't have a lot of discretion, right? I mean, you can't, you can't do much. But you, there's probably some shaping around the edges and recommendations and things you can make in terms of design. But I don't believe you'd be able to do anything that would reduce the overall number of units and overall size of the project. But, but yeah. And, you know, it's, it's not dissimilar to, you know, if you recall, the council exempted projects on parcels over one acre from the administrative approval process. So if we got a, a new housing development application that was over one acre, that would come to the commission as a DR permit, and you would still have the constraints under the Housing Accountability Act that you operated under over the past few years.
Okay, then I would simply at, at the city attorney, give us some guidance on when our recording of ex parte comes in and under what circumstances, because we've all, I mean, the whole community has been talking about builders remedy projects, and the addresses have been published, and the sizes have been published, and we've all, I mean, I can't tell you how many, because I was under the impression that they were, these were all under administrative review. But if you're telling us now that we're going to have to review a dozen to a dozen and a half DRs over the next six to nine months, it would be good to know, I mean, we'll stop talking about them now, but but tell us what the, yeah, because I don't have a record of those conversations.
Right. So just to quickly answer your question, I believe your rules of order, and we can confirm this for you, but I believe your rules of order require ex parte communications that occur after an application has been filed. So this was obviously written before preliminary applications, but I, you know, it meant development review applications, right, when your actual DRP permit applications came in. So those two came in, I believe, something like November 28th and December 8th. But anyway, we can get those dates, but that's, that's generally your rules with respect to.
Okay, well, I don't, then we need to be, because I, we were not advised of those dates or having the city being in receipt of DRs, so I, I will say, I do not have records of conversations that I've had about builders remedy projects in general. I have an open mind, but I, and I have certainly haven't spoken with applicants, but in terms of like members of the public or other people, I'll be the first to say, I, I've had a half dozen conversations, I cannot remember with whom. And I have no idea what's pending on a DR and what's not. So if you could, you know, for the sake of transparency and equity, make sure that we get, that we get noticed on DRs in the pipeline. We used to get those at every meeting. That would be really helpful, and I'll keep records from today onward. I just do not have records from prior to today.
Yeah, yeah, and specifically on the builders remedy projects, we are preparing a, a chart that we'll post on the website that will list the builders remedy projects we've received. The dates, the initial applications came in. Will list where we have DRs, you know, or the DR permits have come in. And we will also include a column that lists when the demo permits for those properties are submitted. So those, we're tracking all of the things, and we'll make sure that the Planning Commission has that information. We also want to make sure the public has that information to know, you know, when a project goes from you know, the preliminary application state to, you know, now this is a real application, you know, we have the DR, and so everyone can keep track of where things are.
Thanks. And if we could have for our first meeting in January the latest version of the pipeline PDF in general, I think that would be really helpful for all of us and for the public. Just whatever, you know, whatever condition it's in, but it'd just be so that we haven't, that we start the year with an updated list, that would be super helpful. Thank you.
Any other commission questions of the director? I do not see any, so I want to thank you very much, Mr. Martin.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna move on, we have a couple more announcements, procedural announcements. Regarding public comment, please note tonight's procedures for public comment, we are accepting real time oral public comment by phone for each item. Please check the top of the posted agenda for the phone number to call once the caller queue for each item opens. The caller queue will open when each item is introduced and will close after the first five public comments are heard. Written comments received up until noon today have been read by the commission. Comments received after 12:00 PM today will be considered part of the record of the proceedings, but may not be posted online with the Planning Commission agenda prior to the meeting. The second announcement relates to the moderator chat function in blue jeans. This is for technical help only with administrative staff. Commission, commissioners have no access to it, we do not see it, we cannot communicate with anybody. So this is only for technical assistance. Commissioners, do you have any other announcements that you would like to make? Not seeing any. We're gonna move on to Agenda Item 2. And this is our consent calendar. We need to open up the caller queue quickly. So if you want to call in and speak on this, there's a number at the top of your agenda, please do so. Those, we're gonna wait a minute, so I'm gonna ask if anybody on the dais wants to pull this while we're waiting for a public comment to come in. Okay, let's let our, let our one minute timer go, and then we'll come back, and I would entertain a motion to move it forward.
So moved.
Yeah, let's just wait until we make sure we don't have any public comments, because somebody could say something that makes us think differently.
We did have a person in the queue, let me just check if they wanted to speak on this item. Last four digits, 6155, you're now in the meeting. You will have three minutes for your comment. You called earlier, I wanted to check if this was the item you wanted to speak on.
No, I'm sorry, 9A.
Okay, thank you.
Do we list, lose Commissioner Lambert, or I cannot see her on my screen?
Yeah, I don't see her either. I'm here. We can't see you.
Okay, as long as you're, as long as you're there. Okay, we're done with that. Did we pick up a caller by any chance, staff?
I, I don't see any callers in the queue.
Okay, great. So I think I saw Commissioner Landris make a motion, and it's seconded by Commissioner Fonda Bernardi. If we could have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
And Sherri's.
Yes. So those items will move forward and come back to us at a future date. Now, we go through our, move forward on our agenda, we have nothing under items 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, that will go directly to 9. And again, we will open up the caller queue to the public, there is a number at the top of the agenda if you want to call in for this item. Meanwhile, if we could get a staff report, we would appreciate that.
Thank you, commissioners. Just gonna fire up the PowerPoint here. Well, good evening. Getting that it's our final meeting of 2022, and we're ending it with a bang with our final discussion on the housing element implementation before you make your formal recommendations to council. So tonight, you can go to next slide, Rachel. The focus will be on parking, provisions for consistency with state law and other changes in the housing element implementation. And then the big need of it is actually the review of all six of your prior discussions across all of the red lines that have been presented to you. We've tried to organize that into a table in the staff report, and we'll walk through all of the areas where we heard, so reflect back to the commission. For just a review of what we heard in terms of direction of where no changes will be made to their red lines, and then where we will be presenting concepts for revisions to those red lines. If you don't actually have revised red lines for you tonight, that would have been quite extreme of a turnaround. What we are talking tonight about is making sure that we, we took all of your your comments from prior meetings and then providing conceptual responses as to, you know, how we will address the planning commission's direction, where staff agrees or disagrees with the commission's direction. You can see where we are tonight, this is, you know, the last of our discussions before the commission's recommendation. You start each of these meetings with just a summary from your last meeting, next slide. It was the seventh, December 7th meeting, where you talked about, discussed ADUs and SB9 and general site regulations. For ADUs, I think generally, you know, there was support for the ADU ordinance and the red lines. And support for allowing flexibility to convert detached structures to ADUs, that was a policy question. We had posted a commission, but potentially limiting it to parcels larger than 10,000 square feet or greater. There was also discussion points around whether we could establish a larger minimum AD, ADU unit size. We had a chance to do a little bit more research into this topic, and we are conferring, you know, with the state further about this, because it's a little bit of a quirk in the ADU state law where it references an efficiency unit as defined by the building code, which is 220 square feet. But there is language in the section that is referenced of Health and Safety Code that appears to allow the city to reduce the size to 150 square feet. Again, it appears to allow, but it does not require the city to reduce the size to 150. Currently, the AD red lines as proposed mention that 220 square foot threshold, but we wanted to provide you clarification about that question. With respect to SB9, there was a support, again, a response to policy question. Those implementation allowance of more than four units on parcels greater than 10,000 square feet combination of SB9 units and AD. It didn't have sort of overall consensus direction from the commission about changes there. The second part that we discussed was with respect, next slide, about general site regulations, facility around outdoor living area, accessory buildings and structures and projections and setbacks. No changes with the accessory structures and the projections and those setbacks, those were largely formatting, verification edits. With respect to outdoor living area, you can see there that there was general support for the proposed red lines. We tried to incorporate, you know, flexibility in developing a framework for private outdoor space, and there was, you know, a lot of discussion around sort of common outdoor space. And what we heard from the commission was adding to the by right menu of incentives and concessions for 100% affordable housing to obtain relief from outdoor living area requirements. I do want to note that provides some context with respect to outdoor living area and quality of life issues that we've been discussing with respect to affordable housing projects, in particular, but housing projects generally. At last night's city council meeting, in the context of the IZO discussion, you know, that, that issue really did come to the fore with respect to council members and, you know, the importance of considerations of these standards, you know, that are in place to promote quality of life, like outdoor space, there certainly appeared to be an interest you know, by the council to ensure that that's sort of the standard is retained, and you know, there's not, you know, a double standard with respect to affordable housing and other kinds of, of housing, I think, which is something that we've discussed, and you know, that, I think, is consistent with, you know, how staff has been proposing. Providing flexibility to outdoor space, but you know, not entirely in the, you know, really for equity concerns and, and the likes of this. Also here in terms of adding it to the by right menu, you know, may, you know, strike some of that compromise where it continues to be a requirement. You know, understanding, but it provides some relief without complete, you know, elimination of that requirement. So I just want to pause there, I guess, with the summary, and just make sure that we have an opportunity for the commission to make sure that we captured your discussion from the last meeting appropriately.
Commissioners, Commissioner Landris, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Jing. So on the, on the minimum, on the minimum unit size, I guess the prior staff, the, the discussion we'd had was that you were suggesting that we go down to 150, and I think we, I had posed the question about whether we needed to. Now that you know what you know, will you sort of circle back with a, an updated recommendation that we can discuss, or what's the?
I think what we are proposing to do is to continue forward to, to keep the 220 square feet.
Okay.
We do have to send our ordinance up to the state anyways for review, and you know, if we get feedback that, hey, you know, that's not right, then we can make that change then, but in looking, you know, at administrative reading of, you know, efficiency unit reference to the building code, you know, it seems 220 is an appropriate place to start, unless we hear differently upon review of all of them.
Okay, and then, stop me if I'm getting ahead of myself here, but your most recent version of the staff report following this and all our other discussions starts to lay out where you agree with us and where you don't agree with us. Is there going to be an opportunity at some point after we're all done with everything for us to actually spend some time going through that and figuring out, you know, what we want to do in terms of our recommendations? And how those get forwarded to council, because I think we might want to take a second bite at the apple and decide what we want to kind of because if you do disagree with us, we might still want our position to be forwarded to council. On the other hand, there might be places where your disagreement, we're, we're, we're not, you know, it's not a hill we want to die on.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. Well, so that's what tonight is for. You know, because we, we, we didn't want to be writing red lines blind, right?
Right.
You know, you've had, you know, six discussions, this is the seventh. And, you know, we're organizing the discussion tonight to focus, you know, on areas of, you know, we've tried to list all of the direction, and we provided response, like we disagree, even, I think there were a couple of areas where we're like, we disagree, but you know, if you want to make a recommendation, here's some ideas you might want to think about. You know, where we could think of something, you know. So that, that's what tonight is for, you know, is to, is to sort of parse that out.
Super helpful, thank you.
Any other commission questions at this point on the past? Commissioner Fresco?
Jing, did you just say that the implementation plan will get sent to the state in advance of our officially submitting it?
No, 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 the, the ADU ordinance. The, the ADU, the ADU ordinance, yeah, after it's adopted, like, you know, if council adopts it, we, we send it up to the state for their.
I see. Okay, I'm sorry, I knew I heard you say that, and I suddenly it was echoing in my head out of context. Thank you.
Okay, I want to ask a question. First of all, I want to thank you for putting in the incentive on the open space, because that was something I was pretty focused on. And I want to make sure I understood the conversation that happened at council, there was an equity concern that it wouldn't only be affordable projects that were asking for this reduction in open space, is that what, is, did I understand that discussion properly?
Yeah, there, I think there was just an overall concern that, you know, open space is important, and particularly important in 100% affordable housing projects, I think, was sort of the, the general discussion, you know, that quality of life standards are important in affordable housing projects, and open space was kind of like an example that was given. You know, in terms of, you know, where you have families, you know, they're going to need some onsite basis, so there was just concern of, you know, that if a, a standard like that could be eliminated, you know, does that create, you know, equity concerns with respect to, or, or relative to, you know, market rate and next income projects?
Is there, and, and again, my focus when I was talking about this was always mentioning how affordable projects, but is there any reason that we wouldn't allow just mark, just multifamily projects to request this, and that takes away that kind of, you know, at least it tries to equalize the equity issue a little bit?
I think that's definitely something we can think about. I think that the reason it was written this way, because I think that was the crux of the commission's discussion, but certainly we can take that into consideration.
Okay. Great, that's the only question I had for, for this part of the agenda. Though unless I see any other hands go up, I think we're ready to continue down the the presentation. All right, please go ahead.
Great. I think it sounds like, I, I believe we heard an interest in sort of going through the review of implementation before we go back to parking, so that's where we'll start our presentation tonight. So the, I've broken this up into Group 1, Group 2, Group 3 to follow the table. That's in your staff report. So we'll start with Group 1. You know, where we start on October the 12th in terms of definition of a housing project, and these are basically organized first and foremost with topic areas, you know, where no changes to the red lines are proposed, because we heard general support from the commission in terms of the red lines that were proposed. So next slide, please. So next slide, please, Rachel. So that includes the definition of a housing project. And then the rezoning proposal for the height and FAR development standards. We did hear general support for the definition of a housing project as proposed in the red lines. And also the rezoning proposal, which basically reflects what is in the housing element with the exception of deferring NC Maine, Montana, Ocean Park and Pico. And then also Bergamot area plan, what we call the core and the edges, for lack of a better word. Next slide, please. I think, you know, these are responses to the commission's direction to defer Maine, Montana, Ocean Park and Pico NC zone. I think as we've discussed before, you know, staff is not supportive of that direction to defer rezoning of these areas. What that would mean is that first and foremost, that program has an October 15th, 2023 deadline for implementation. And, you know, I think as we've explained before, if we were delaying implementation of that, you know, it, we're not clear as to what, you know, what, what timing is meant by deferral. Because we do again have that October 15th, 2023 deadline. If there is interest in some manner of changing the height and FAR in there, you know, that of course requires an amendment to the housing element, which would require the city to go through that housing element amendment process. So, you know, procedurally, you know, it certainly presents some challenges. Deferring the rezoning, you know, would, would conflict with the, the table that is in the housing element for program 1J, which commits the city to doing that rezoning in the NC zones. And you can see the minimum FARs of 2.25 to 2.5 and a height of 50 to 55. We sort of blended this together, so I don't have all the specific table here. And Pico Boulevard to a minimum of 2.0 to 2.5 and a height of 45 and 55 feet. It would be inconsistent with the AFFH actions in the housing element to expand housing choices in high opportunity areas. You know, so I think we've heard discussion, you know, like there are no sites, SSI sites on Maine and Montana or, you know, it's never going to happen or what have you. But it is, the rezoning of Maine and Montana was a key component of the AFFH strategy because it's not an area in those NC have been, housing occurred before. And that was a key component, you know, when HCD did their review. I think that we do want to point out that prior, prior drafts of the housing element had language that, you know, the city would have the right to adjust up and down. That was explicitly rejected by HCD in their review of the housing element. We were asked to take that language out in exchange for very concrete commitments zoning. And, you know, if, if we kept the standards as they were, or as they are today, as they currently exist, you know, housing projects in those areas would infeasible, you know, which would be in conflict with state law and the housing elements. So, you know, that's, that's really some of the reasoning, you know, that, that we don't agree with the commission's direction to defer rezoning in these areas. But, you know, so I think we were really looking for, you know, I guess confirmation if, you know, that the commission wishes to make that recommendation just so we understand, you know, what's meant. I think when you say deferral, you know, if there are any other thoughts or changes that you had in mind, just so we can best advise you or provide guidance.
Yeah, I'd like to, Leslie, I see your hand. Just hold on just a second. Because I think this was a meeting when Leslie and Sean were not there, when we talked about this. And it was really kind of brought up by Nina. And I don't know if Nina wants to kind of outline her, you know, kind of thoughts on why this, why this is appropriate. And if not, Nina, you don't have to, because it's pretty clear what the, the proposal is. And then we can hear from the two commissioners who are not, who are not here.
I think that we, everybody knows, I think we've talked about it many, many times since then. I think we've gone over it at every meeting, actually, since then.
Okay, so I'll take it as you have nothing more to add on that. So Commissioner Lambert.
Yeah, I, I don't want to debate this tonight because I think it would be pointless. I have a couple of questions. Was there a feasibility study done for Ocean Park Boulevard and Pico on the NC issue?
Yes, the, the height and FAR proposals were based on feasibility analyses across the city.
Where, where, what, is that part of the earlier one? I don't remember seeing it.
That's, that was part of the HRNA feasibility analyses. I, I would have to take a moment to get the date of that analysis.
We can do that later. It's not, it's not critical. The other question I have, and I think I know, but I want your confirmation, but the only site in any of these NC areas on the SSI is the Rite Aid site on Pico. Isn't that right? So we're not looking at a net loss except for the Rite Aid site if we blow over the NC.
I think we're just confirming that, but you may be correct there.
I think I answered it. And then what, I don't understand the range on Pico. Can you explain that?
It's not a range. It's a, because Pico is, or NC, I'm sorry, I need to bring this up. It's, so the NC portion of Pico is 2.25 and 50 feet. The MUBL portion of Pico is 2.0 and 45 feet.
So the MUBL is actually lower than the NC.
Yeah, it, depending on the portions, I think we were trying to give you the flavor of the entirety.
MUBL is on the east side of Pico and NC is in the middle.
There's parts, yeah.
Yeah, it's on the west side, too.
Right. And, and actually, NC, NC, if we adopt this, would be higher than general commercial.
Well, the NC, the, the rezoning of Pico is actually the lowest in the entire city.
I understand. I understand. It's still higher than MUBL and it's still higher than GC. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thanks. So, yeah, I, I want to, I want to say something about this. I mean, so it's, part of the issue here is that I think we're taking, I, I totally respect where staff is coming from, first of all, totally get that. Second of all, we are living in a world, I'm trying to frame this carefully. We are living in a situation where there is a very, very, very strict and narrow reading of what we've talked about. And there's also a question of the cost benefit risk analysis. If ultimately our city council elects to make a set of decisions that it feels might be in the best interest of the city overall and take a calculated risk about what if any, you know, how if any way HCD is going to interpret the action and what if anything HCD is going to choose to do in response to the action. We've been really clear from the get go, I think, that we do not want, and I think a lot of us feel this way, that we don't want to throw our neighborhood commercial, our legacy commercial, much of it owned by people who've been here a long time and people who've been redlined. You know, you know, that we don't want to throw that under the bus for the sake of meeting a single housing objective. And I think that's an important policy to make. We have to have a functioning, we have to have functioning commercial districts when this is all over, right? We have to have places where there are not commercial rents that are insane and impossible to be paid for by people like tailors and cleaners and other things. And I think we're looking for that kind of an approach that says from a holistic, on a holistic basis. And we, the other thing that we know is that we could have done more. I know there's some disagreement with staff again, like we need to talk this through. We could have done more in Bergamot than we did and in the original document. And so we're talking about, I think, a holistic approach here. And I totally get the discomfort. I totally get that you have many rounds with HCD invested in this. What I would like to do is I would like to find a way for the planning commission's view on this matter to go to council alongside staff's best thinking on this matter and give council an opportunity to have a full and frank discussion of the choices that are before it, some of which, because of potential legal risks, might need to happen in closed session. I just want to name that. And this is above our pay grade. But I think as planning commissioners, we're trying to balance out the housing, the commercial, the mobility, the open space, all the things that are within our jurisdiction here. And we're struggling up against a set of state restrictions that are really constraining our ability to build an integrated city that actually meets its housing goals. So I don't want to pick a fight. I just wanted to say that out loud because that's my integrated view. And I hope that that view can make its way to council if it reflects a majority of the commission. But I also know and trust that staff's best legal and programmatic advice is going to get there as well. And I want this council to ultimately think through what we're proposing and make the best decision for our city. I don't have a better way of putting it.
I, I appreciate that. And actually, before we, I just want to remind you, we are in questions, actually. So, you know, before, we haven't taken public comment yet, so just, that's just a reminder. But just for clarity in terms of tonight, you know, whatever the commission's recommendation is, I do want to rest assure, we're not hiding it, like, you know, your, your recommendation, whatever it is going to be in January, will be carried forward, even if staff disagrees with, disagrees with it. I just want that to be clear, you know, in no way will we filter out the commission's, you know, commission, the, the commission's recommendation or not pass it forward because absolutely we will do that, just like we always have. But, you know, there, there may be areas where we disagree. And that's, that's what the purpose of tonight is, is for, for you to understand sort of that counterpoint. But of course, the commission can make, you know, whatever recommendation, it, a majority of the commission can make any recommendation it desires.
Commissioner Fontana already. You're still muted, I believe.
Sorry. I'm in general agreement with Commissioner Landers. But as the way I remember it, we had a general discussion that if we were going to quote unquote, downzone these particular avenues, then we would upsell in somewhere else. And we had talked about Bergamot. And I don't know what the mechanism is that when you squash this down, the other one pops up. But there must be some, some trade off there that you can, you can say this is equal to that and therefore there's no net change as far as HCD. So I think that was an important part to take to the council with, with this recommendation.
So just quickly, I, I have some thoughts that I may share later. But again, we're not in questions yet. So, I mean, we're still in questions. We are not in discussion yet. So I just want to stick a pin in this piece and we will circle back to this issue when we get.
Okay.
Hey, just one final question.
Go right ahead.
I can answer this because there are no units in NC as part of the 13,000, except for the Rite Aid site. It's not a question of taking units from this district and putting them in Bergamot or anyone else because they weren't part of the 13,000.
Okay, that's, doesn't matter to me. I'm just asking that if we had to, we have that option. But if we don't have to, even better.
Well, I think he's saying capacity, not units. So anyway, let's move on.
Okay. So no more questions on this phone right now? If, I mean, I don't believe we have any other questions and we should move forward. If you have questions, let us know right now. Otherwise, Jane, continue with your presentation.
Great. Next slide. Can you put the presentation back up? So the next area where there were discussed was the Bergamot area plan. Okay. This was the commissioner's direction to increase the height FAR standards in the CCS zone north of Nebraska and to consider increasing the height and FAR in the core area beyond 84 feet and 4.0. This, this discussion, you know, appeared to be tied to the prior discussion around the NC Maine, Montana, Ocean Park, Pico, concerns about over concentrating. And this is an area again where staff just agrees with the commission's direction. You know, reasons being concerns about over concentrating housing capacity in the lowest opportunity areas of the city, keeping in mind that all of Santa Monica is either higher, highest opportunities. So it's kind of all relative. The CCS zone north of Nebraska was also proposed at a slightly lower height. Like, and the reason for that was it was intended to be a transition zone immediately adjacent to existing multi-unit residential neighborhood there. You know, which is why the standards were a little bit lower than they are in the core, you know, where it's the highest. And increasing, you know, the height and FAR beyond the 84 feet and 4.0 may over incentivize housing in the VAP as opposed to other areas in the city, you know, such as Detroit or, you know, other areas that haven't, you know, seen the capacity, you know, of, of housing as opposed to, you know, along the sort of middle sections of the city. So, you know, again, this, this does raise some of those, you know, similar AFFH concerns, you know, probably not to the same degree as we have if, you know, we, they, they need housing infeasible on Maine and Montana, you know, in, in conflict with the housing element. But in this case, you know, there would be concerns about over concentrating the housing capacity in one particular area of the city, you know, that is relative to the others of the city and maybe the lowest opportunity. So that was some of staff's reasoning with respect to the Bergamot area plan. I do want to go to the next slide that if the commission did wish to present a recommendation with respect to of zoning, although we don't recommend changing those standards. We do have sort of a scenario here for you to consider if you'd like. You know, you can see, I think it's being a little hard to read, but we tried to put it in red on there to keep those transition areas on the edges at the 2.5 and 55 feet, closest to the adjacent multi-unit residential neighborhood. But increase that portion of CCS that's maybe surrounded by, I think it's Nebraska, Pennsylvania, Stanford and Berkeley, I believe. Do 3.25 and 70 feet, that would match up with the rezoning occurring on, you know, parts, boulevards that are north of this area. So this is one of those situations where staff doesn't agree with the commission, but we did try to come up with, you know, a potential scenario for you to consider if you did want to make a recommendation with respect to.
Okay, I think we have a quick question for Commissioner Landers.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm just trying to understand, I'm trying to put these pieces together. And I, and I think you discussed this at the meeting I didn't attend. But if you can go back one slide, we had this conversation, right, about how various maps, it's, it's a two-part question. We had a conversation about the various maps showing where affordable housing could and couldn't go based on EnviroScan. And essentially told us, we can't put affordable housing anywhere in Santa Monica. You know, and certainly anywhere feasible. So that's question number one, relative to this concern about the over incentivization of housing in, in the Bergamot area plan. I also know from community conversations with community members, maybe three, four years ago, when we were looking, when we were talking about the now defunct Pico well-being plan, one of the things came up was that there was some concern about development in Bergamot that wasn't paralleled by development in Santa Monica, but not an opposition to development in Bergamot from, from community members. So just to, to name that. And then my, my related question is, why are we treating housing in the context of the housing element? Our city, our much larger city neighbor to our east just declared a state of emergency with respect to housing. Why are we even using the language of housing as a burden or something that ought not to be incentivized anywhere in our housing element? I, I don't, I don't get that. I'm, I'm happy to, like, I understand having a conversation about the relative, right, what are the relative implications of housing versus other uses? What does it mean for the city's economy as a whole? I just raised my question about, you know, NC. But I'm just really confused because we're, we're being multiple points that we can't put affordable housing anywhere. Here we figured out a place to put it, which has the least displacement impact relative to the rest of the city commercially and residentially. And then we're being, it's being suggested that incenting housing is a. And then we're being, it's being suggested that incenting housing is a bad thing to do and that housing is somehow a burden, which I don't think should appear anywhere in our communications because it is literally the only thing that will solve the housing crisis. So I'm just trying to understand how you want us to think this through. And I'm, and I'm wondering whether it's the state that's putting these, this, like, we're, are we getting conflicting? Are we getting conflicting direction from the state? And if so, what is our discretion to actually respond to it creatively?
So if I could respond to that, I, I don't think it's, I don't think we're making, you know, an extreme statement one way or the other. To, to answer your first question, you know, to clarify the mapping. So it's not that affordable housing is not allowed anywhere in the city. There were maps, so originally that, that's, I think you're asking about in the context of off-site affordable housing.
Yeah, no, I'm being hyped up.
Right, exactly. But I, I think it's important to be, to be fact-based and accurate in this case. So I think that the, you know, that the mapping, you know, that Cal EPA showed, you know, for 2022, kind of expanded the disadvantaged communities area where it ran basically along the entire, like, I-ten corridor, you know, and included the downtown. And so a policy question we had posed and actually discussed with the Housing Commission as well was like, maybe there's a different way to think about this. And so, you know, we've been looking at mapping concentrations of housing in the city. And yes, there is affordable housing all over the city, but there's, you know, relative to other areas, there's probably greater concentrations in some neighborhoods versus others. And, you know, could that be a basis for creating a zone if that is of interest? Because that, that is a concept that's been discussed, right? In terms of where should off-site affordable housing not go? So I, I do want to clarify, it's not that it's not allowed anywhere, you know, it's, we're trying to, to follow the process to get to that point. Secondly, you know, we're not talking about housing like it's a burden. This is about AFFH as it's been applied. And, you know, to be fair, this is the first time it's ever been applied in the housing element context. But I think generally speaking, you know, it's about kind of equitable distribution of housing capacity across the city, right? And so in the context of something like Bergamot, you know, when the commission's direction was to look at, you know, upzoning it even further, you know, when it's already at some of the higher stand, highest standards in the entire city. You know, is that creating a stronger incentive? Because it's not that these standards are infeasible in Bergamot. You know, these are higher than even our feasibility analysis had initially determined. And, you know, the commission's direction to go beyond 4.84 feet relative to other areas where, you know, housing has, you know, never really been accommodated. I think that's raising, you know, some of like, are we addressing the AFFH issues? And I think we're just communicating to, you know, what came out of the housing element review process with HCD. And, you know, they, they were really looking at like, hey, where's stuff on the north and the south? Like, there's never really been, you know, upper pulls of the same scale than in the mid-city regions, you know, of, of the city. And I think that's what we're trying to, you know, make sure that we're not like overdoing it, you know, in one area to the detriment of something else.
That's a both thing, thank you. I mean, I, I still think it's, I still have those questions because I still think that the AFFH is bumping up against the, you know, other considerations. And so I'd like to explore that more. But no, I appreciate your answer. I, I, I still want to leave it out there as, if necessary, a rhetorical question. Because I think we're, we're bumping up against conflicting, we're bumping up against conflicting considerations. And I think we're being steered in a, I think your best thinking is steering us in a particular direction, which we're resisting a little bit, or I'm resisting a little bit. And, and I, and I want to leave that open so that, you know, a more robust decision-making can occur.
Sure, absolutely.
We have a couple of other commissioners who want to ask questions. And I, I will follow up with that, Sean, by just saying that it is conflicting with a lot of state law too, which is like the reducing VNTs. But anyways, let's move on to Commissioner Lambert, I think you had the question and then.
I just, I want to point out to everybody that we're talking about one site tonight, right? In Bergamot, whether to go higher than we had before. And, and let me say that I support your recommendation, which is 70 feet and 3.25 FAR. I think that's a happy medium. Nice transition between the south side of Nebraska and the, the 55 feet height around this particular site. And we're, we're also talking about mostly market rate housing. I mean, you know, this is not, I've always objected to the idea that Pico's a dumping ground as though low-income people are, I want to say it. And my impression from people in Pico is they want to see more market rate housing. And this is exactly what this is. So again, I support staff's recommendation of 70 feet for this particular site and 3.25 FAR.
Okay. Commissioners, let's try to keep question, I know it's hard, that's hard. Let's try to keep on questions here as opposed to discussion. Go ahead, Commissioner Fresco.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about fair housing because I feel like the idea is being thrown around a little bit to rationalize things. And I guess my thought, based on my kind of long-term historical knowledge of the city, I have my idea of what's fair and that kind of thing. And I, is, are you basing, you know, like Main Street, to me, maintaining the way it is on Main Street where there are small, local, affordable businesses is fair. And that incentivizing housing of a certain type there, which would necessarily be pretty costly, would not necessarily make things more fair. It would make it less fair than the way it is now. And so I, I'm just, I guess I want to hear you talk a little bit about what makes things more fair. I just, in the, I just want to say in the Bergamot area, I don't see why putting more housing there wouldn't be fair because the idea is to get more housing everywhere. So why is it less fair to put it there? That, that's why I'm seeing conflict in what's fair and what isn't.
Well, to be clear, housing is a permitted use throughout the city, right? That's a base recommendation in the housing element. I think actually even our existing code allows housing everywhere. And then we're adding it zones where it was formerly prohibited. But housing is permitted on Main Street and is permitted in Bergamot. However, you know, that feasible is sort of second question. Existing standards would not support housing in Maine. You know, and we certainly haven't seen, you know, the degree of it as we have, for example, in downtown in Bergamot. And, you know, so that's where, and, and we went, that's why we went through the feasibility analyses of like, you know, what heights and FARs are necessary to support the level of cautionary city, you know, would like to see housing projects. When we talk about AFFH, it's within the context of housing, not commercial development. So I, look, we're not, we're, we're just trying to communicate, you know, what we understand to be, you know, direction from the state and implementing AFFH with respect to housing elements. And we have a certified housing element and we're obligated to implement it. You know, I, I, I hear you in terms of your terms and like, can we balance this, that or the other? But the mayor, the bare fact is there are heights and FARs in the housing element that the city has committed to rezoning. And this concept of trading height and FAR, moving it around or having adjustments up and down, again, that was explicitly rejected by HCD in their review of our prior drafts. When that language was presented, we were told to remove it, right? In exchange for concrete commitments. And that is what we see in the certified housing element now. When we talk about fair housing in the context of Maine and Montana relative to other areas of the city, you know, those are areas that have not traditionally accommodated housing because the FARs are below one in those areas. And, you know, is it, is it affirmatively fervent for housing? Can you put housing where it's always gone and ignore all those areas that, you know, it's never seen? And from a, from the state's perspective, they're looking for incentivizing housing, housing choices, housing affordability in high opportunity areas, of which those are areas, you know, that are in the northern and southern parts of the city, right? That haven't traditionally accommodated that. So that, you know, that is kind of how they viewed it, is like in, as a whole across the city. Are you equitably distributing it? Is everyone sort of sharing, you know, having their fair share of housing? And, you know, secondly, if you're going to allow housing, it does need, can't see housing as permitted and then create standards that would make it infeasible to do a housing project in those zones. So, but does that answer your question? I mean, in terms of.
No, that, I mean, it just explained why you don't think we can not do neighborhood, not hold off on neighborhood commercial upzoning. And my question was about how some things are fair housing and fair, affirmatively fair housing. I don't know. Well, I guess it doesn't.
I, I understand, you know, again, this isn't.
It just doesn't seem fair. Ocean Park was redlined just like everywhere else. And it was a mess and it was a terrible place. It wasn't terrible, it was cool because it was so low income and artistic and different. But it was redlined and people couldn't get loans and it was in the dumps. And it was, you know, race restricted and all those things. I just don't understand why Main Street is, anyway, it's okay. We've been around, I feel like I've asked this question before, like having deja vu. Nevermind.
Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah, just to clarify a quick point that Commissioner Lambert touched on. With respect to heights in Bergamot, were you looking for feedback specifically on that one parcel north of Nebraska? Or is the context, you know?
Yeah, to be clear, no, 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 we, we can't zone just one parcel. This is, this is a zone, it's a portion of the CCS. And it covers that full block between Pennsylvania, Nebraska, Stanford and Berkeley. Again, I, I want to be clear, this is not staff's recommendation. We not proposed changing the standards at all from what is in the housing element. But, you know, hearing the commission's discussion, we did want to present an alternative scenario for the commission's consideration if, if you wanted to, if, if you, you know, still wanted to proceed forward with, you know, some kind of upzoning in that CCS zone. So I, I want to be clear that, that, that doesn't support what we presented to you, but we just helpful in terms.
Yeah, I, I do have a discussion point on this later, but I'll reserve that for first question.
Great, thank you. Let's move, let's move forward.
Okay, we're moving now into the next set of categories. To the next slide and maybe two more slides, actually. Excellent, there we go. Yeah, so for the development standards review, we, we're not proposing changes. We heard general support for applying the tier two building footprint as a new standard, except for the industrial conservation, the office campus and the DCP. We heard support for eliminating maximum ground floor height, removing limitations on the size of roof decks. Currently, those are limited to like 20%. So, you know, you understood that in the context of, you know, more flexibility with respect to location of outdoor living area in projects. And then more flexibility for private outdoor space parameters. We did want to note that, you know, not everything is going to be in the red lines. You know, there are sort of specific design details and the like that are part of the objective design standards project, you know, that, that will trail in implementation a little bit. We hear general support for the reconciliation of the losing zoning map inconsistencies. And then for the AHPP, that was, you know, the red lines as proposed, except for the, we'll, we'll touch on that in a moment. The areas where off-site affordable units could be located. Not sure if there's questions on that slide at all.
Yeah, I don't see any, I don't see any questions. And I kind of think we should try to hold our questions until you're done with our presentation or we're.
Thank you, okay. So we'll, we'll move on now into the areas. So th- those were a view of the areas where staff is not proposing changes. We're now moving into the section where we are proposing changes for the revised red lines based on the planning commission's direction and then some additional thought from us. For standards for multi-unit dwelling projects, we heard from the commission's direction to standardize the unit mix requirement citywide. There, what will be in the revised red lines, which is two and three bedrooms, minimum 10% and in studios, maximum 15%. So there would be no distinction between the downtown and the rest of the city, which I think is where we originally started. For development standards review, flexibility for ground floor residential, we will bring back revised red lines to allow ground floor residential citywide, except for Maine and Montana and the downtown basite conservation zone, which includes the promenade, Second and Fourth Street. In terms of outdoor living area, the 2% slope requirement for open space will be removed from, in the revised red lines. And then the common outdoor space, 100% affordable housing would be added to the by-rite menu of incentives and concessions, right? That would be from outdoor living area requirements. Per daylight plane, changing the starting point for where it's measured is also something we will add to the revised red lines. Slide. Changes to the AHPP. So this is with respect to the off-site affordable housing units that can be located based upon existing concentrations of affordable housing. So that is the map again of existing affordable housing projects in the city. I think preliminarily, you know, we're, we're looking at the area probably at least around potentially the Pico neighborhood as defined, you know, currently in the ordinance, might be a good place to start thinking about that. I think there was, you know, concern about excluding the downtown, given that's where some of the highest intensity of development occurs in the city. So that, you know, is, I think, some of our starting point in thinking through a geographic area that is not dependent on Cal EPA's map, which kind of grew, you know, from when we first looked at it last year. For state density bonus, we will be revising or providing revised red lines to address HCD's technical assistance letter based on the concepts for local incentives that were presented at your November 2nd meeting. Essentially, what it would do is allow the possibility of achieving that maximum bonus of 50%. You know, I think just as a reminder, we are establishing a new minimum of 15% in our AHPP program. And those units would be divided with very low, low and moderate income. However, we would consider, you know, that in totality to be equivalent to the 15%, you know, at state, in, in state density bonus law. So that applicants who provide, you know, that 15%, you know, whether we do it through a local bonus or, or some sort of mechanism, but essentially the idea is to allow them the possibility of achieving that maximum 50% bonus, you know, if, if they would like. And we will remove references to Performa also from the state density bonus ordinance. Continuing on in this group, this is a kind of a new idea and it has to do with downtown community plan standards. So thus far, you know, we've been looking at the, this table here, which shows tier one, tier two and tier three. So previously, staff had actually proposed keeping the tier system in the DCP. Part of that, really, a lot of that actually came out of concerns about downzoning prohibitions from SB 330. You know, with the new revised FARs, we were having kind of a hard time kind of reconciling, you know, having revised tier one that was higher than it was before and then adjusting tier two and tier three. And I think that's where it resulted in sort of retaining the tier system in the downtown. However, that would be different than the rest of the city and sort of present some implementation challenges. And, you know, in order to simplify it, I think, you know, this is kind of a new concept that, you know, we're, we're presenting to, for the commission's consideration, which would be the elimination of the tier system in the DCP for housing. It would remain for non-housing projects, but for housing projects. It'd be a single set of standards and it would be based on the higher of either tier two or tier three in our proposed rezoning. And you can see we've outlined and read there the standards that would be selected. I think some of the reasoning here was really the impetus for this is, is in looking at this again with a second, sort of a second look. We were realizing that, you know, the DCP has, you know, long been discussed, like, you know, this is the area of the city, you know, that has the most intensive level of development, highest level of activity. You know, but you had tier one standards, 2.75. know, but you had tier one standards, 2.75 and 60 feet, that were actually lower than some of the other commercial boulevards in the city, like Wilshire, Wilshire is at 3.25 and 70, similarly Santa Monica Boulevard, so you kind of had this odd situation where, you know, Wilshire Boulevard is 3.25 and 70 feet, you cross Lincoln Boulevard and your standards drop, you know, which kind of didn't really make a lot of sense. But, you know, so in, in looking at sort of reconciling that, you know, choosing the higher of either tier two or tier three results in kind of having greater consistency as we're looking at the boulevards in the downtown in totality, and if you go to the next slide, please, he just, an example there for the Wilshire transition, this was in what I was referencing, you can see on the left, that shows the citywide map, you know, of 3.25 and 70 feet on Wilshire, and then the Wilshire transition zone drops to 3.0 and 65 feet. It's, it's a little strange that the standards change, you know, when it's the same boulevard, not much difference, you know, in context, so the proposal here would be for the Wilshire transition zone to increase the FAR in height to 3.25 and 70 feet for consistency with the entire boulevard, you don't have two different standards on one boulevard. Next slide shows, I think, you know, what this new proposal looks like, you know, again, includes the elimination of all the tiers and just one FAR standard, one height standard for zone in the downtown. The difference here is that we'd be looking to establish a 20% onsite inclusionary instead of, this is based on feasibility analyses that were done separately for the downtown, that shows that this is full at 20% and then 25% offsite, and we attached the study to your staff report for review, because it's, it's been a while since we've looked at that. And in terms of process, because the downtown's tier system also related very much to the application thresholds and, you know, the way these projects are processed, so we, that is kept consistent, so former, you know, what was formerly a tier three downtown project over 90,000 square feet required a dorm room permit, that will continue to be the case going forward. I know your staff report says 65 feet, that was actually our, our oversight in that regard. You know, we, we reminded this morning as we were looking at it, that the DR threshold is actually 90,000 square feet in the DCP, so that is a correction to the staff report that, you know, the 65-foot recommendation you see there as a threshold is not something, we are withdrawing that as a recommendation, that is not correct, and what we would instead propose is just retaining the existing DR threshold of 90,000 square feet, and this would affect specifically only housing projects in the NV and the TA zones, you know, where we were proposing, you know, those tier three standards anyways, so it's not a change in process. And then finally, on this group one, this is kind of a new question that came about as we were review, we were reviewing the red lines and changes, we were realizing that the new districts where we had added housing as a permitted use, it actually doesn't include any of the, you know, normal like neighborhood that would be associated with housing, so in those employment districts, I see on the HMU, encouraged to supportive neighborhoods that, that serve new housing projects that are in permitted use, in those areas, we would add at minimum restaurant and retail as permitted land uses, those are the most common, you know, we didn't really, hadn't really analyzed kind of others in there, you know, those are certainly the most ones that we see most commonly, to be clear, in those areas, we're not requiring ground floor commercial use, but, you know, if, if an applicant wanted to include that use, wanted to, either, that didn't, in terms of having the neighborhoods have uses that support new housing projects. Next slide, I can move on to the second group, implementation, which is the process streamlining.
Hold on just a second, unless it's urgent, I'd really like to hold our comments.
It's a very brief question, and I don't want to delay the point, could, could you just remind us the effective date of the feasibility studies that were done?
For downtown, it was in February?
Okay. And have those been updated in the new interest rate environment?
They have not, no, we haven't updated.
Thank you, all right, thanks.
I have a quick question, I didn't understand what you said, Jane, were you saying that AAs for all projects less than 90,000 square feet of building area? Did I misunderstand?
That's right.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Yeah, and, and I think to understand what 90,000 translates to in the NV and TA zones would be basically like a triple lot, a 22,500 square per parcel, assuming they develop fully to the 4.0.
Okay, thanks.
Moving on now to the second grouping of programs, next slide, please, again, we'll start with the red lines where no changes are proposed, next slide, that would be the streamlined, in areas where the streamlined approval. There was a planning commission discussion about concurrent processing of demolition permit applications within the 75-day waiting period. Staff does not agree with the concurrent processing of demo permit applications with the entitlement application, you know, really leave, and that's based on past experience with entitlement processing that went very, very sideways, it was a tremendous amount of time, staff and the applicant to, you know, go through the entitlement process again, redo the environmental analysis, it sort of creates a very uncertain process for the community, you know, for staff, for the applicant, and, you know, it seems there's, it's possible to try and create a cleaner process than, you know, what we have seen occur in the past with, with some projects, where it was either mid-entitlement or after the project was approved, you know, the site was designated as a historic resource, and, you know, that, that presented a lot of challenges in terms of trying to move the project forward. We did want to note also that retaining, you know, our current system where you have to complete the waiting period before you can file the formal application was also, you know, our attempts to reconcile our local process with SB 330, that requires that cities make a historic resource determination at the time that an application is deemed complete, so you have 30 days to do that, and, you know, if, if we allowed concurrent processing, it would effectively negate the possibility of a historic resource nomination, given, you know, that short timeframe, allowing that time period to clear, I think, provides, at, at minimum, you know, you, you cannot file a, a, an application, you know, once that, that waiting period has cleared, or, you know, as long as the demo permit is effective. So it seems like that is a cleaner way to proceed, and it provides, you know, clarity in process for everyone who participates in the process. If the commission wishes to make a recommendation, we do have some options with regards to this concept of, you know, how we deal with the concurrent processing of demolition permit applications, you could certainly make a recommendation, it has been, as has been discussed, to allow the concurrent processing, understanding the risks and challenges, and, you know, our past experience with this, with this, which has not been good. And I think secondly, you know, I think an idea we want to also put out there is, we could consider reducing the length of the demolition waiting period, for example, to something less than 75 days, you know, the genesis of the 75 days actually is related to, you know, when the landmarks commission was previously reviewing demolition permit applications and allowed, you know, the opportunity for, you know, a couple of hearings for, you know, they, they, you know, made a, requested more information, you know, about, about a potential demolition permit application within that timeframe, so that's what it's tied to with the commission, you know, currently not reviewing those permit applications, you know, we handle those in a different way, you know, is there the opportunity to maybe rethink the length of that waiting period, you know, as a compromise as well, so that's an area that, with respect to streamlined approvals, next slide, please.
Do I have a question?
Yeah, I was, I was trying to ignore that, but the fourth time you brought it up, let's have your question quickly.
Okay, this is quick, do I understand you to say that the SB 330 preliminary application, which has to be finalized in 30 days from submission, has to have a historic determination before it's considered final?
No, no, it's after you file the formal application.
It's after the formal, so it's not the preliminary six months?
No, no, you have, you, once you file the preliminary application, you have 180 days to file the formal application.
Right.
And then you have, basically what says is, you know, when the application is deemed complete, so we have 30 days to make a complete determination.
But it's the final application that has to have a historic determination, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, in terms of no other changes proposed, it was the applicability of zoning ordinance to the city on sites, that was basically excluding city on sites from the zoning ordinance, because they will be handled through a separate process. With regards to the moderate income housing overlay, there was a commission's direction to allow market rate units in the MHO projects, staff doesn't agree with this, you know, really, I think primarily because it's inconsistent with prior council direction and discussion with respect to this program, the crux of this program has always been, you know, within that these are, assuming these are 100% moderate projects, because there's a lot of flexibility provided, particularly with unit mix, and it was, you know, a particular trade-off, you know, that was led to the creation of the program, and if we allowed market rate in there, you know, you have the potential to kind of incentivize these market rate and moderate projects over lower income, 100% affordable housing projects, so they are, you know, for, for that reason, we're not proposing changes to MHO red lines, next slide, please. Moving now into the section on proposed changes for the revised red lines in the second grouping with regard to streamlined approvals, we are continuing research on that one acre threshold, it was a question from the commission, back to whether the administrative approvals comply with housing element law, I apologize, that second bullet there kind of faded, what we wanted to provide information is that we, we did have preliminary feedback, we have discussed this provision with each, with our HCD reviewers before, and we did get feedback that, you know, there wasn't particularly concern about it, given this was universe of sites that would be affected by this. With respect to the timeframes for processing, this has been a, a discussion point at the commission, what we would propose here is to apply the SB 330 timeframes for processing, for not just the initial application, but for subsequent rounds of reviews, what that means is, it's, you know, what the city's already practicing, which is the 30 days deem an application complete or incomplete, and then once it's deemed complete, 30 or 60 days to, for providing co-compliance comments, you know, in terms of the project's compliance with applicable codes, and the 30 or 60 days is a distinction, you get 60 days if you have a project that is greater than another. And so instead of that, just stopping with the, you know, initial round of review would also apply to subsequent rounds of review to provide some timeframes in terms of, you know, once an applicant resubmits, you know, their project, you know, when they would expect to receive comments back on the subsequent review. Thirdly, we would be looking to revise the development review permit findings for the commission's direction, you know, there was concerns about words like compatibility and, you know, things that seemed a little bit nebulous, and also reinstituting, I guess, findings that were in prior code that indicated that co-compliant projects are considered compatible, next slide, please. For streamlined design review, this is an area where staff disagreed with the commission, but we did have maybe an alternative solution here, there was a discussion to allow the applicant to elect to have the ARB review occur after entitlements, the reason that we are not supportive of just having that as sort of a, you know, ju- just a free election, anyone can decide, is that, you know, you might have different, different processes for different projects, and I think it's important to maintain consistency in the process, everybody knows what to expect, it may also conflict with the language of Program 1B, which states that design review process will shift before concurrent with the entitlement issuance, we don't want to not be consistent with that, and it, and also importantly commits that any procedural change won't unreasonably delay housing projects, and we could certainly consider something like timeframes for review or something to shore that up. At the moment, you know, staff would, would make the change to allow the ARB review to occur after entitlements in kind of the narrow instance where the entitlement review is complete and the only remaining procedural step is ARB approval, I can imagine this might be an instance where a project, you know, needs maybe a second hearing at design review for some reason, you know, but their administrative approval, you know, they've been through all of the co-check and it's ready to issue, in that instance, we wouldn't want, you know, the, the design review to hold up the issuance of the AA, so maybe in that instance, you know, we would, we would allow the design review to occur after, but I think the idea is, you know, we, we do want to try and consolidate this process as much as possible to have it occur, so the design review is occurring concurrent with the processing of the administrative approval. Next slide, for the moderate income housing overlay, we heard direction to expand the MHO, we agree with that to include non-residential zones citywide, and also multi-unit residential zone citywide, but only for owner-occupied multi-unit properties, and provided there's appropriate displacement protections in place, so we agree with that. On the community assembly surface parking lots, the commission answered the policy question that you did support, requiring the unit mix to the TDM requirements, since there's allowance for market rate housing, and then also to make that word change, that community assembly uses pain, instead of being the primary use, which makes sense, given that sometimes you might have a housing project that's bigger.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, we agreed with a, with requiring the unit mix and TDM requirements on the market rate housing, not on the whole project?
Okay.
Yeah. So it's only if they put in market rate housing, then that housing is subject to unit mix and TDM requirement, but the moderate rate we were exempting? Yeah. Thanks.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Next slide, please, on, yeah, residential zone surface parking lots, there was a direction to reduce the replacement parking requirements, so we will be looking at that for revisions to the red lines, and also to, you know, do the analysis to ensure that the proposed R1 density currently is proposed at 1 for 2,000, that it's not a level that results in fewer units than would be allowed under SB 9, these are four surface parking lots that are zoned R1, they're primarily, there's a, you know, handful north of Montana, I think there's some in Sunset Park as well that we can take a look at, but we will do that analysis and provide revised red lines as necessary. So that's the end of group two, and then group three, we sort of discussed actually at the beginning, just to review, again, we can do this fairly quickly with SB 9, next slide, and other site regulations, no changes proposed there, as we heard, general support in the areas you see on the screen, and then the next slide, changes for the revised red lines with respect to ADUs is allow the flexibility to convert more detached structures to ADUs, but limited to these parcels of 10,000 square feet and greater. So with that, that actually brings us to the end of this presentation on the overview of your prior direction and some of the staff responses.
Just, just to for clarity, do you have more presentation that you have on the other parts of the staff report, or is this?
We do, yeah, we, we do have parking, and also other revisions, if you'd like us to go through that now, we'd be happy to do that.
Yes, I mean, I think we should do that, because we're going to pick up some public comment on all of this stuff, and the commenters might have to call back twice.
Okay, yeah, so I'll turn this over to Rachel now to go through the parking presentation and the policy questions we have for you.
Okay, good evening commissioners, so I will be presenting Program 1D, which is our program to reduce minimum parking requirements for housing projects. When we first wrote the housing element, we had envisioned Program 1D to reduce minimum parking requirements for housing projects to the reduced parking overlay one rates, these reduced parking overlay rates apply to most areas of the city near transit, but since the preparation of housing element, AV 2097. But since the preparation of housing element, A V twenty ninety seven was signed into law, which pretty much eliminated parking requirements for all projects within half a mile of a major transit stops. The only exceptions they provided was for hotels and motels. And so this, uh, this map here that you see with the areas highlighted in blue, um, are all the areas within half a mile of a major transit stop. So essentially what A V twenty ninety seven would do is eliminate minimum parking requirements for any projects that's within these zones, within this area. Um, keep in mind that this does not exempt a project from having to meet coastal zone parking requirements. So even if they're with, within a half a mile of the major transit stop, they would still have to comply with coastal zone parking requirement. Um, for our first policy question that we have is within enactment of A V twenty ninety seven, the half mile radius pretty much cuts across some, some neighborhoods. For example, you could have a housing project that's within the half mile, but another hu- housing project that's within, you know, the same block be outside of the half mile. So they could have a different parking requirement. So one of the policy questions that we are asking the commission tonight is if you choose, uh, you can eliminate the parking requirement for all housing projects outside of the half mile transit area, except the R one zones. Um, so pretty much right now, the half mile transit area covers about seventy-three percent of all the non-residential and multi-unit zone parcels in the city. So by choosing option one, you would basically apply the remaining seventeen percent and have that, those areas to not have minimum parking requirements for housing projects. The other option is that you eliminate parking requirements for housing projects only within the non-residential zones. Um, so right now eighty-four percent of our non-residential zones are within the half mile transit. So sixteen percent of, the remaining sixteen percent of that would be covered under option two. Um, so depending on which option you choose, um, would determine what the minimum parking requirements are for those housing projects outside of the half mile transit area. Um, or you could choose not to do any option one or option two, but at minimum, the city must, uh, reduce the parking for housing projects outside of this half air, half mile area to at least a minimum, uh, parking overlay one rates. Should I stop at each policy question or do you prefer to answer each one as we go?
Well, I mean, I would love to answer them and get them out of the way, but we need to hear from the public and then opine on it.
Okay, so then I'll continue on. So the second policy question that we have is right now our existing code requires additional parking if there are extra bedrooms or units added on. Um, particularly to multi-unit, uh, multi-unit buildings. And so for areas that will have minimum parking requirements, should the city continue to require that any proposed additions and alterations for existing multi-unit residential buildings be required to provide an additional parking space or spaces? Um, if it increases the number of bedrooms or if it increases the number of units. So for example, if someone wanted to add an extra bedroom to their ten unit apartment building, um, should we require them to provide the additional parking? Or if they decided to add an additional unit, um, should they be required to provide the, um, additional parking? The third policy question that we have for the commission is, um, with the, with the elimination of minimum parking requirements from A V twenty ninety seven, um, should we establish maximum parking limits, uh, similar to what we have in the downtown community plan? Um, so as you know, in the downtown community plan, we don't have the minimum parking requirements, but we do have parking maximums. And so if there are parking maximums that are established, should they be the existing parking overlay, overlay one minimums? Um, or should they be something else? So that is the third policy question that we have. Policy question four, um, addresses the replacement of existing parking. Um, for example, if there is a housing project within a half mile of transit and it decides to retain that existing use, um, but removes, uh, and removes the required parking for that use. Should the project be required to replace the displaced parking? A V twenty ninety seven is not explicit as to whether or not, um, you know, the city can or cannot require it. It's pretty much silent, so we could, uh, choose to require that that displaced parking be replaced or we could, um, not require it. And that is a policy question that we have. Policy question five addresses A D U parking. Currently under A D U law, um, the parking requirement is one space, uh, per A D U, except in five conditions. And one of these conditions is that if a part, if an A D U is within half a mile of transit, which is different than the half mile transit stop, it's pretty much anything, um, but within a transit line, um, then no parking is required. And so for ease of implementation, um, should we just amend the zoning ordinance to just specify that that one space parking requirement is removed and that there won't be any parking requirement for A D U's? Um, this policy question is addressing parking in the front setback of R one zones. Currently in the R one zone, um, you are not allowed to par- uh, park your car or your park your vehicle in the front setback. But in the instance where an A D U displaces existing parking, should that displaced parking be allowed to park in that front setback? Uh, so long as the existing curb cut is retained, um, and it's not, um, and if that unit or if that parcel is not located on, uh, a back out street and no back out street and other specified conditions. In addition to the policy questions that we have for planning commission, um, we are proposing red line changes that would provide parking relief for certain non-residential uses and housing projects, um, in specified zones. Um, one of which is the office campus zoning district. Um, this is consistent with prior commission direction, um, where we would not require minimum parking for commercial uses within a housing project in the office campus area. Um, and the genesis of this is to encourage, um, you know, the, the inclusion of commercial uses within that housing project so that residents would have access to, you know, neighborhood serving uses. Um, another parking relief that we would provide, um, is allowing commercial uses along, um, commercial uses within a housing project along Main Street on Montana to have a reduction of ten spaces from the minimum parking requirement, um, if there is one. Um, as, as I said before, there are parts of Main Street, um, that may be, you know, exempt, uh, from park, minimum parking requirements if they're within half mile of transit. Uh, Montana is outside of the half mile of major transit stop and so, um, they would still be required to provide minimum parking, um, depending on planning commission's direction. Another amendment that we would, we are proposing to make is to provide parking relief of ten spaces when residential uses are added to existing commercial, um, development in non-residentially zone parcels. So this addresses, um, for example, um, parcels along Montana. If, uh, an, if an applicant chooses to, chooses to keep an existing commercial use and, um, provide an additional residential use either on top or next to the existing commercial development. Um, we would provide a, a parking relief of ten spaces from the minimum parking requirement. Um, other revisions that we are presenting as part of the red lines ha- have to do with benefits for tier two projects. Um, so I just want to make a correction here, um, in response to public comment that received tonight. Um, this chapter would apply to primarily, um, tier two non-housing projects in non-residential zones. And as we had discussed before, we're proposing elimination of tiers for housing projects in the mixed use commercial and downtown and employment districts. So this chapter really would apply to non-housing projects, which are, you know, those fifty fifty projects, um, fifty percent commercial and fifty percent residential in these, in these zones. And so this chapter would, would apply to these projects as well as, um, tier two housing projects in the multi-unit, R three and R four zones, which, you know, currently as proposed would still have tiers. And so this chapter would apply for, um, these two types of projects. So this chapter would increase the, in terms of the unit mix requirement, it would pretty much be the same as what we were proposing in our red lines for, um, the regular tier one projects. Of set the two bedroom would be increased to fifteen percent, um, as you see here, consistent with our prior red lines, we would be deleting the average bedroom factor standard. And we would be requiring that the unit mix for affordable housing is, uh, corresponding with the market rate units. And lastly, um, the last set of red lines addresses, uh, Senate Bill four seventy eight, um, which was passed about a year ago. Uh, and it provides a guarantee minimum F A R based on the number of units proposed. So it's a little bit different than density standard. Um, what this S B four seventy eight says is that if someone comes forward with a three to seven unit housing project, we have to provide a minimum of one point O F A R for them. Um, similarly for eight to ten unit projects, um, the city has to provide a minimum of one point two five F A R. In addition, uh, the city cannot impose a lot coverage, um, parcel coverage requirements that would physically preclude, um, this type of project from achieving the F A Rs. Um, and we can also not deny a housing project, um, solely on the basis that the parcel does not meet minimum parcel size. So what we're proposing in our red line amendments is to increase the parcel coverage for tier one projects in the multi-unit residential zones to fifty percent. Um, based on our calculation, this, this increase in parcel coverage would allow tier one projects to achieve the minimum one point O F A R. And then for eight to ten unit projects, um, we would be guaranteeing them a minimum of one point two five F A R. So that's provided in our red lines. In addition, we would be increasing the parcel coverage, um, for two unit projects, as I said before, and we wouldn't be prohibiting. And, and in our red lines, we are also removing single unit dwellings, um, as a, as a, as a use, so as not to incentivize underdevelopment of these parcels. Um, and I think that's it in terms of our presentation.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Uh, commissioners, do you have any questions at this point or should we open up to the public?
Public.
Great. Okay, let's do that. Um, public, there is a phone number at the top of your agenda to call in with comments. Hopefully we have a couple of people in the queue and we can get started with public comment.
Last four digits, six one five five, you are now in the meeting and you will have three minutes for your comment. If you could please state your full name and then go ahead.
Evening Commissioner, Commissioner, uh, this is Dave Rand, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Dave Rand with Rand, Pastor and Nelson, uh, hope you're well, commission and staff, uh, calling in tonight really to focus on one issue. And it has to do with changes, uh, being proposed in the downtown. I was frankly surprised to see the elimination of the tiers in the downtown at this kind of late stage. Um, uh, but what I think it does is present an opportunity to frankly relook at the streamlining options for downtown, which at the moment seem to pale in comparison to the rest of the city, which seems quite backwards. Given the downtown is where you've always wanted to concentrate the greatest amount of density for housing production, where you have the transit, um, where you're going to be getting more affordable housing through the inclusionary program than anywhere else. It simply doesn't make sense that, um, I could do a hundred and fifty thousand plus square foot project, uh, site less than an acre in the new Bergamon area plan, four point O eighty-four feet zoned area. But in downtown, um, again, which should be the greatest repository and where all the incentives should be for housing, I'm capped at ninety thousand square feet. Um, I also just don't understand why the rules need to be any different frankly. If you're going to go with this one acre, um, limitation, and in other words, code compliant projects proposed on sites less than an acre, regardless of size or height, uh, are streamlined with administrative approvals. Uh, why not just do that downtown? Keep it simple. Um, that ninety thousand square feet is a relic of, uh, the pre-housing element area when there were tiers. Now that's blown up, there are no, apparently going to be no more tiers, there's a single, single tier of development rights downtown. And frankly, an opportunity to improve the streamlining. Uh, I worry, um, that housing providers would frankly stop at assembling sites at, at, at a triple lot and not go beyond that for fear of being pushed into discretionary review. Uh, and it, it seems to be a perverse incentive, uh, given, given, given the location. So please take a look at improving the streamlining. Please consider just adopting the same streamlining program as applies to the rest of the city downtown, so you'll get more housing, more affordable housing much faster. Thank you, appreciate the time.
Thank you, I don't see any questions, so next speaker please.
Last four digits, five, six, two, one, you're now in the meeting and you will have three minutes for your comment. Could you please state your full name and then proceed?
Uh, good evening, this is, uh, Kevin Colesel, twelve fifty sixth street. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Stanford Nebraska Properties, who owns the property at seventeen fifty seventh Stanford Street, located in the, uh, conservation creative sector of the Bergamon area. There has been discussion tonight, we previously suggested upzoning a portion of the C C S district, which includes this property to encourage more housing development in the area. In response, as outlined on page twenty of the staff report for tonight and as already discussed, staff indicates that a modest increase to three point two five F A R in seventy feet is an option for the commission to consider, even though staff did not believe upzoning is necessary. And I know that staff and, and Jing have already kind of expressed their, their, um, concerns about this. Um, however, I would just emphasize that the city is clearly facing a housing shortage and this would be a missed opportunity not to help incentivize this owner with a large parcel interested in developing housing. Uh, we believe that this modest upzoning is consistent with other rezoning in the area and still maintains a buffer to adjacent residential neighborhoods. For example, um, in the M U C district to the west of our client's property, the limits are four point O and eighty-four feet adjacent to Nebraska, and then it steps down to three point two five and seventy feet to the north. We're suggesting a modest increase, um, in the area in question to three point two five and seventy feet, while still maintaining the two point five and fifty-five feet in the remainder of the C C S district in the east and north. This creates a step down and buffer to the residential neighborhoods. Um, a, again, we believe that this is an appropriate approach to help, um, incentivize, uh, housing in this area. And we requested the commission recommend upzoning this area consistent with figure three at page twenty of the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, I don't see any question, oh, no wait, I have one question for you, Mr. Colesel. Commissioner Lambert?
Okay.
Um, Kevin, i- is the current zoning the same as the, um, adjacent area, two point five fifty-five feet?
Yeah, the, the, currently it's, uh, the same, the two point five and, um, fifty-five, and we're asking it to be bumped up to three point two seventy. I mean, would, would, would like higher, but we think that's a good compromise and, and creates a step down and a buffer.
Would that add basically out of the story on the site? Yes?
Yes, and, and I, I think, um, we haven't obviously designed a project yet, but I believe that, um, the owners have had an architect look at it and think that this could, um, you know, potentially add up to an additional hundred units there.
Okay, uh, next caller please.
Last four digits, one, three, nine, five, you're now in the meeting and you will have three minutes for your comment. Could you please state your full name and then go ahead?
Good evening, recent planners, uh, this is CJ Pepper with Hart Armor. Uh, I want to comment staff on diligence and.
Hold on, hold on a second, hold on a second please, can you put, put a stop on the timer? Sir, you are so broken up and choppy with your, your comments, we, we are not going to be able to hear you. So let's try again one more time and if not, you might have to call back and try to get a better connection.
Can you hear me now?
Um, it sounded like you're still breaking up, I'm sorry to say.
Okay, I'll, I'll back from.
Okay, thank you. Next caller?
One moment to change their number here. Okay, um, last four digits, five, two, zero, nine, you're, you are now in the. You're now in the meeting and you will have three minutes for your comment. Could you please state your full name and then go ahead?
Good evening. It's Ken Kutcher from Harding Larmour, Kutcher and Cozel. Good evening, commissioners. Happy to talk tonight about some of these changes that we've heard tonight. And I'm pleased with the...
Mr. Kutcher, are you still there?
Yes, hello?
We've lost... Okay, we lost your audio there for a second. You want to keep going?
Sure. I'm pleased with the direction that staff is going in terms of changing how to process downtown projects, their housing projects, without the tier system. But I think that the change we heard tonight is not going far enough. And as I'd echo Dave Rand's comments, that there's no reason to have a lower threshold in the downtown than there is on the other commercial boulevards. It doesn't make sense we should be encouraging housing in the downtown and the streamlining of those applications, not discouraging those compared to the other commercial districts. There was a question raised, which I have the same question, about the feasibility of the 20% AHPP requirement. And as noted in the questioning, that study assumed interest rates and other factors from years ago. And we heard that previously from Paul Silvern when he was asked that question, I don't know, probably a year, year and a half ago. And it's just inappropriate to rely upon that data at this point, given the current economic climate. Doesn't make any sense whatsoever. I did want to comment on one of the issues I raised in the letter I submitted this morning, late this morning. That's to do with the processing of state density bonus applications and the fact that state density bonus law requires that timetables be established for the processing of those applications. I don't think those have been addressed yet in either the red lines or the discussions. And that's obviously an important feature. I know it's a sensitive issue with staff when we talk about timetables for processing, but it's an important factor to applicants and needs to be addressed per state law. With respect to parking, I would encourage that with respect to maximums, that the maximums be tied to the current minimum parking requirements, not for the overlay one parking requirements. And let the market help decide what the appropriate parking standards are for particular projects, their uses, and their potential tenants. We don't want, you know, vacant properties because there's a perception that it doesn't have enough parking. And certainly support not having parking requirements, but I think there needs to be a range of flexibility within there. Happy to stop here and take any questions. I don't want to overrun my time.
Well, it appears that we have two questions for you. I see Commissioner Landris first and then Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Mr. Kutcher. So I register your comments about the parking maximums. And I saw a similar letter from Ms. Larmour. I can't resist asking, is there anybody at Harding Larmour who's not calling in tonight?
I think Ms. Larmour is not calling. She has...
Oh, okay. All right. How to give your associates a chance. Anyway, I'm trying to sort of understand. If we go down the road of eliminating a parking requirement entirely, you know, if you know the way to San Jose, then why do we need parking maximums at all? That's like, what value does a parking maximum give to projects relative to financing and things like that? Or why could we just elevate the pause?
Not from the perspective of an applicant. I think, you know, the weighing from a policy standpoint is just, you know, you don't want to over-encourage people to build parking and have, you know, more cars coming. So it's a policy question and not one that, you know, an applicant is advocating for having some maximums.
But your perspective is... If there's going to be a... That if we're going to have maximums, then set the maximums at the current minimum.
Correct. Exactly.
Got it. Okay, that's super helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Ken, in your letter, you alluded to HCD's concern about inclusionary programs that require more than 15%. And HCD could step in. Is that a trigger or do they have the option?
They have an option. It isn't... I don't believe that it's mandatory. I think that they have an option to step in and require or provide some scrutiny. And, you know, I would expect that scrutiny might be heightened these days, but the statute just says that they have the option to scrutinize it.
And I seem to recall something either in law or the regs where if they do step in, they want to really carefully look at the feasibility.
Exactly. Yep.
Cars would have to pass muster with the state.
Okay. Commissioner... I'm sorry, Mr. Kutcher. You also said something about a timeline for density bonus, I believe. What was that?
Yes.
What was that comment again?
Yeah. Yeah. State law provides, and this is the language, "In order to provide for the expeditions processing of a density bonus application, the local government shall do all the following." And the first item is "Adopt procedures and timelines for processing a density bonus application." So there's supposed to be a timeline established.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that. Any other commission questions right now? Or I think you are. We are done with you this evening. Maybe you can hand the phone to...
Thanks very much for hearing.
Maybe you can hand the phone to the colleague who's having trouble connecting.
Yeah, different offices or different... Yeah. But hopefully you can connect. Thanks a million.
Yep.
Last four digits, 1007. You're now in the meeting and you will have three minutes for your comment. Could you please state your full name and then go ahead?
Good evening, planning commissioners. This is CJ Laffer. Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, this is much clearer.
My apologies for the technical issues there for my cellphone. This evening, I just want to raise one issue related to the proposed changes to the parking standards, which as Rachel explained, are required under AB 2097. Specifically, under AB 2097, except for very limited circumstances, California cities may not impose minimum parking requirements on residential, commercial, or other development projects within a half-mile of transit. Moreover, AB 2097 expressly states that reducing unnecessary parking is a matter of statewide concern and that the statute should be interpreted in favor of the prohibition on the imposition of mandatory parking minimums. AB 2097 unambiguously applies to commercial development and does not distinguish between new projects and enlargements or changes of use within existing buildings. Going forward, the Santa Monica zoning code should clearly state that if within one-half mile of transit, both new projects and enlargements and changes of use within existing buildings are exempt from providing additional parking. In reviewing the staff report and proposed red line, it's somewhat unclear whether or not staff is proposing such changes for commercial use within existing buildings. For Bergamon, for example, all of which falls within a one-half mile of transit, it seems that the deletion of minimum parking requirements are covered under the red lines that were circulated earlier this fall. It should mean that no new parking is required for any commercial change of use. The same should be clearly stated for all other sites in the city within a half-mile of transit. Now, this may actually be staff's intent under the proposed red lines, in which case the language under chapter 928 could simply be clearer. Beyond the requirements under state law, from a sustainability perspective, not treating changes of use within existing buildings, the same as new construction, simply creates a perverse incentive to demolish and replace existing commercial buildings rather than reuse them. Moreover, disincentivizes establishing tenancies in existing buildings. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We do not see any questions for you. We appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Caller?
We don't have any other callers.
Okay, fantastic. Commission, it's back to us for our questions and discussion. Let me just ask the question, does anybody need a quick break before we get into our robust discussion? Okay, let's take... I have 7:31. Let's get back here by 7:40, please. Okay, are we good to go, staff?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay, great. So Commissioners, it's discussion, question, question, couple more questions, then discussion time. I would like to try to focus on the prior issues that we brought up on, from like, staff report, page 10 and on, first. So I don't know, Commissioner Lambert, if you want to, do you want to lead us off in your, your comments about that?
Uh, let me get my stuff together.
Okay.
And thank you for doing that. If I'm running in and out, you know why.
Okay, well, okay. Commissioner Fontaine Marder, do you want to go ahead and start while she's getting?
I was hoping that actually, what was nice about the staff report, there was a number of points, there were decision points for us. I thought we should just go straight down that list and each one, we would look at and say, yes, oh, maybe. That way, instead of everybody piling on their own individual, let's say pet peeves or pet concerns, we would, we'd be feel more systematic about it.
Okay, agree. Could we have the, um, the PowerPoint posted and mailed out to us? Cause it's not.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, we, we, the PowerPoint, the PDF is on the agenda now, your agenda. You can download it, um, off the agenda. Yes.
Where?
It's, uh, below public correspondence. Might have to refresh.
Oh, I've been refreshing, it's still not happening for me, but you never know. Okay.
We could also, we could also use the staff report.
Yeah, but, well, the PowerPoint's been updated, right? So, um, hang on, it's not reloading for me, but I'll get there.
Okay, I have my page 10 in front of me, so.
Commissioner Fontaine Marder, I like, I like your suggestion, Commissioner Fontaine Marder, but I was trying to accommodate, one of our commissioners has some urgency and might not be able to be here all night and had comments on the discussion topic starting at 10, and I think everything before then, those are policy questions, which I think, that, that makes it very easy to go through those. But I believe Commissioner Lambert has some other items on things that staff is trying to get comments, comments or responses from us in areas where we didn't have agreement before.
Well, the first one on page 10 is the neighborhood commercial.
Right.
And, and I, you know, I just don't feel ready, um, I don't agree with it.
You froze up, you froze up, so we couldn't hear what you said.
Look frozen, I'm moving.
We didn't hear you, so you'll have to say it again.
Um, I mean, I, I don't agree with the neighborhood commercial heights, but we all know that we debated it forever. Give me?
Yeah, we hear you. So you're saying you're still supportive of the direct, the commission direction to postpone upzoning the neighborhood commercial?
Yeah, but I mean, I don't think it matters, frankly. The staff is going to go to the city council with their recommendation. And I think there, there are a lot of reasons other than, um, being precious or other things of why not to do this from a planning standpoint. But I'm not really sure it makes sense to debate that at this point.
Okay, do you want to, do you want to? Is there any other commissioner who wants to comment on this? We have had a robust discussion. Mr. Landers?
I mean, yes, I'd like to make the case, um, that I said what I said earlier. I, I do, I do think it's worth making a strong case to council and giving council all the, um, positions that we think would help it make a better decision. Um, but, uh, have we weighed in on the, on that CCS, that little stack?
I was going to get to the connection.
Not yet, but I need to hear from you guys a little bit more about why this wouldn't work on neighborhood commercial, because I would likely be the person who has to go and defend this position. Wasn't somebody, I'm not supportive of your, of the group's position. So I have heard that it's because rents are cheaper um, in that area, and that those are old, old redlined areas. But I could use a little more.
Let me, let me add, I can add to that. Um, in the case of Pico, I think the case could easily be made that upzoning that section of Pico, which by the way, would make it more intense than MUBL, which is on the east side of Pico, uh, would add to commercial displacement and residential displacement because the market rents would, I think, contribute to the increase of rents in the Pico neighborhood when those rent-controlled units would be controlled, basically gentrification. And I, I really think that increasing density on Pico, um, would do that. And I think displacement is something that HCD wants us to avoid, but, but if that, so that's why I don't agree with it on Pico. Um, in the case of Main Street, I think the argument could be made that you actually could build housing in NC, up, NC on Main Street, because we just saw a housing project, uh, in NC on, uh, off Main Street, uh, with the, with the ground floor retail that made the housing work. Um, the other, the other part to think about on Main Street is that those, those sites are but public parking. And there's no reason that you couldn't do a development with the footage on Main Street with the public parking areas and still keep the height at 32 feet, um, and somehow bridge the alley between the parking lots and Main Street. Um, Ocean Park, Ocean, no, I'm sorry, Sunset Park has far, far more multifamily units and single-family units. So I'm not really sure that we're going to get a whole lot of bang for our buck, a rezoning two blocks between 16th and 8th through the Ocean Park Boulevard. I just don't think it's worth it. And I also think that 55 feet of budding on R1 district is a really bad planning idea. Um, so those are my points.
Okay. Commissioner Fresco? You're mute, you're muted.
Sorry. I think you guys have hit a bit for me already on this, and it is, I think at this point, really in the, uh, you know, but one of the important things that we have to think about is that the neighborhood commercial districts, all of them are in really a diverse range of neighborhoods. Every one of them is a little bit different. And it's really where the people who are here now gather, and this is in addition to what my colleagues have said. And they're, they're really the core and the heart of those neighborhoods, which are our main residential neighborhoods in the city. And yes, you can have hearts of neighborhoods in new development, but when you get incentivized that much, that you get that much new development in places that are where our community gathers now, it disrupts it. And it breaks it, and it takes a long time for those kinds of places to mature the way these are now. And I just feel like it would be a huge loss to our community. And we'll have a lot of housing with a lot of people who don't know how to find each other, and it won't be a nice place to live.
Um, go ahead, Jean.
Oh, sorry, um, just, just as, uh, we're hearing the discussion here, I think it would be really helpful for us to understand whether um, the reasoning here is to defer the rezoning or to actually amend the, um, standards in the housing element. That would actually be very helpful um, for our clarity or understanding of the commission's direction.
Commissioner Lambert, you?
I would recommend, um, I don't know how others feel about actually amending that. Moving the 55 feet leading the car.
That's going to require, that, just to be clear, and Jean, tell me if I'm wrong, but that will require us to go back to HCD and change our.
No, I understand that. Um, and if HCD says no, absolutely not, then we don't do it. Um, but before HCD would take any remedial action, maybe give us a chance to cure. I think we should take that chance.
So let me just ask the question, if, if we went down that path and they said no, and we had to rezone that area, and it doesn't happen by October 23rd, are we subject to builders remedy issues?
That's a. So that's why I was going to hop in, right? So the, the, this, the city committed to the, uh, development standards in the housing element as minimum development standards that would be adopted by October 15th of 2023. If we do not get through the amendment process by that date, or if HCD, to, to the chair's point, does not agree to the proposed amendment, then we will be out of compliance with our housing element as of October 15th, 2023. And subject to all the parade of horribles that goes along with being out of compliance.
That's assuming we can't resolve it by October 2023.
That, that's, that is, that's the assumption, yes.
Is there, Chair, or I, I guess, can I just ask, and maybe the city attorney can come back? Is there a reason we can't go in parallel tracks? I mean.
Right, if you mean, if you mean move, so I guess that's what the planning manager was trying to, to get clarity from the commission on. Because as we've explained before, that is the deadline that the city committed to. So an amendment, you know, as you know, takes months and months and months. Um, possibly, and HCD is actually going through review of, and this is, the planning manager can speak to this, review of other jurisdictions right now for their housing elements. Um, I'm not sure that this would be something that they could prioritize, um, in terms of processing. So we just don't know, there's a lot of variables there, and then there are the public hearings that require, um, you know, for amendment and the noticing with that. So, um, it's not to say that it isn't possible, we could look into a parallel track, but I just want to make very clear uh, what that process entails and, and just the variables and the unknowns involved.
I mean, what I would say is, I'm, I'm concerned about two, I'm concerned about two things, um, practically speaking, really practically speaking. Number one, for me, the changes in Bergamot are tied to the non-changes in, um, the, the NC, right? Because, because for me, we're making a case for no net loss and maybe even a net gain of housing capacity. If we do, we tie these things to each other. I think that's very important for the city's position if we're looking at amending a housing element. That's number one. So we can't have these happen independently of each other, or we will be in a situation where we, where we've essentially upzoned, um, one place, and then the state comes along and says, well, now you can't downzone this other place. We're, we're trying to make it a whole, we're trying to make whole policy for the city. That's on one side relative to essentially tweaking our housing element. And I would love to know if there's a way to do that in parallel with good faith efforts to meet our obligations under the housing element. The second piece that comes in is, um, I don't know, I mean, you know, some will know better than I do, but I have a sense that the current interest rate environment is profoundly transforming the ability of housing developers to produce housing. It's changing deal, deal structure, it's cha, I mean, the passage of measure ULA and the passage, passage of measure GS will have financial effects, you know, good policy in Santa Monica, but, but the interest rate environment, the tax environment, the supply chain environment is profoundly affecting everybody's ability to deliver housing projects that pencil. And so I'm worried about SB 35 coming in, not because we haven't, you know, done our job, which we're going to do, but because the market is not, um, is, is not going to, is not going to help us get there. And so I'm really, I'm, I don't see a reason for us to, particularly when these properties are not, you know, in the NC, we don't have, other than the Rite Aid, we don't have properties on, on the SSI to, to get us there. I feel like we need some creativity to sustain our economic recovery, sustain our economic development, and, um, and find a solution. But I feel like we are the victims of conflicting state rules and a market that has, in the current environment, turned housing, you know, is changing housing. And, and I, I would love to be upfront with HCD about this, but I also recognize, and maybe we can explore this with them kind of above, you know, on the table. But if there's a litigation risk, and I, the thing, the other thing I wanted to point out is that for the first time, private parties have the right to litigate. Um, it's not just a question of whether HCD can litigate, other people can sue. Um, you know, that, that is, I feel above our pay grade and council needs to discuss the litigation risks. So, um, that, that's why, that's where I am, which is why I asked about parallel process.
Yeah, well, that, I mean, I, I want to hear what other people say, but that makes some sense, because then we're not, there's not a jeopardy to us of having, um, builders remedy issues. I think you can make a coherent argument to HCD that there are other state rules like veh, vehicle miles traveled that are benefited by putting density near transit. And that individuals, you know, and, and that's really where we want to go. But I'm afraid to go out on a limb and not make the changes we've agreed to at this point, because I don't want to give somebody the opportunity to drop a bunch of projects on us that we really do not want. Not that we really want a lot of these.
Why can't we, why can't we just submit a letter to HCD asking them?
We can. I mean, I don't know, the staff, staff has to tell us how this actually works out. The staff has already has their plates full. But I'm, I'm in, I'm interested in, I'm more interested in this, this avenue than, than just making the change without talking to HCD. But Jean, do you see a path forward with what we're talking about right now? Without pulling out all of your hair?
I mean, this is, again, I think we've provided you all of the best information we have based on our experience of, you know, nearly the last three years and entire process we've been through with the housing element. Um, you know, that being said, again, you know, the commission can make whatever recommendation you would like to make to council. Um, I think we've given you, you know, all the information and the ramifications of going through the process and the time that it takes. Um, there are no guarantees of, you know, the turnaround and, and all this, right? Um, because they're just, you know, for clarity, like the Bay Area is going through their housing element cycle, you know, they don't drop everything just for us once we submit. I mean, there, there are things that are out of our control in this process. Um, and, uh, if the commission wants to make that recommendation, again, we will of course carry that forward. Ultimately, it will be, you know, we, we will not enact any sort of process until we receive council direction. Ultimately, it's the council that will decide. Um, you know, whether we proceed down amendment path or, you know, we certify the housing element as is, again, you know, keeping in mind the timing concerns, uh, timing constraints that we're under, you know, to be able to accomplish that. Um, you know, in terms of, I think, the question about concurrent processing, you know, if you recall, that's where we were at in February, January, February of last year, right? We were, we had it in, you know, we thought that we were, you know, going in the clear, right? And we have a certified housing element, it hasn't even been certified for two months. Um, and you know, we're looking to amend it at this point and go through that process. You know, and I, I honestly couldn't guarantee you an outcome, right? Because it's not our decision. Ultimately, it will be.
Right, let me, let me just cut you off for a second and ask this question, because this gets back to, I think, what Sean said about SB 330 and not able to downzone. We've committed in the housing element, it's not our zoning, but we've committed the housing element to a certain FAR. Is anyway, are we any caught by that nuance of SB 330 that you can't downzone a site now?
Right, we, well, the date is. 2018, yeah, I think, I think it's January 2018, am I right?
It is, it's January 2018. So you can't downzone below what, what it was January 2018.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay, well.
Um, may I ask one more question?
You certainly may.
Um, if we submit an application for a revision to a housing element, does that mean that the existing housing element goes away? Like if we submit it and they say no, does, does the existing housing element just remain in effect? Or is there like a gap period where we have to resubmit the original one? How, how does that work?
So we, I, I imagine, I think, you know, it, I, I, I think one thing to be mindful of is that, you know, whatever, if we propose an amendment, it doesn't, it, it won't necessarily be viewed as like surgical, okay, so we're only going to view this thing. It's, it's viewed in context, again. You know, these are part of the reason that you're hearing staff express so much concern is because this is not just about trading off heights or FARs or only solely about capacity. HCD was very, very clear in the housing element review process that when it comes to AFFH, it is not just about the SSI or achieving the RENA. It's about opening up the opportunity for housing in areas of the city that haven't previously accommodated it. And the opportunity for it, so it's not about sites on the SSI when it comes to AFFH, like that's something really, that's a really important concept to, to understand. That, you know, it's not that narrow, and so, you know, and, and again, you know, it was very explicit that, that, that language. that, that, that language we had in there about, you know, we could adjust it up or down, because, you know, that was, those were earlier discussions in our draft. They were very explicit that that was not acceptable language. Right, it was, it was taken out of the housing.
That wasn't what I asked.
No, no, I, I'm, I'm asking, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about it because I think it's important to understand that it's in context, like whatever amendment we send up there, because, you know, we're just changing the standard. It will have ramifications through about, okay, what does this mean with respect to like all the categories of review, like it sort of opens it all up again. You know, I, I can't, again, like, if you can't guarantee it's only going to be limited to like, okay, just look at this one program, you know?
No, but I, I think just to answer her question, though, I, I think the answer is the existing certified housing element stays in effect until HCD approves a new housing element. Got to be, that has to be the answer, isn't it?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, well, that was.
Okay, so commissioners, we have, we have gone around and around on this, you know. I don't know what more we can do right now on this discussion, there's a, there's a policy difference between staff and, and the commission body. I think we just need to move, move, move on, and this will be a discussion item for the council to decide. Okay. Commissioner Fonda.
Well, I, I like the idea of writing a letter. Would we do it right now, in other words, ask the city council to write a letter just about this issue to speed up the timeline, because we're going to be racing the clock. Could we do it at this meeting? Move to have the city council ask the question for us?
I don't, well, I don't know that we have anything agendized to add, to recommend to the council right now, I mean, certainly on the eleventh, we would have no problem making that recommendation. Not a hundred percent sure today we can.
I would, I would agree, this is just a discussion. It, it's not your actual recommendation to the city council that's before you this evening, it's, it's to give further direction to staff or what to bring back to you on January eleventh.
Well, I don't, why doesn't the commission have a small subcommittee on this? I, to the extent this is legal, and I'm not creating a problem for us all, why don't we have a small subcommittee on this? Where people try to outline and draft up a letter that is presented to council to send to HCD?
I volunteer.
Hold.
And Nina, Nina volunteers.
And I, and I would be happy to help out. Although I was in the, I don't know that I'm going to be that helpful to you, but I, I would push on some of these other issues of VMT. We could find some other state rules.
Is it correct that it takes five city council votes to change the height, density, et cetera, in a route?
I believe so.
Yes, and the DCP.
Right, that's in the charter.
Commissioner Landers.
Or procedure, yeah, just procedurally, so I understand, this, you're now is going to be a small informal Brown Act group working on this, and then we'll get a letter at the next meeting to, for all of us to discuss?
I would, I would recommend, I would recommend that, that's the safest thing to do for Brown Act purposes.
And not the next meeting, we'll say it would be the eleventh, so we have a little more time, but it's got to be the staff's hands to get into the agenda. And, and, and this is, this is a, this is a preview of something I'll say later, but I think when we get our staff report for the eleventh, it should come out about the first and not the fourth, we need, we're going to need a lot of time to digest that, and I know that creates probably a big hurdle for the staff, so you might not be able to accommodate that, but if you can, please try to.
Okay, so just, because this was therefore the last opportunity for me to have input in, like any of us to have input in lever before, before you go off and draft it, the, your, Chair, your point about VMT is very important. And I think it's the question of integrated holistic kind of city planning and dealing with some of the prediction, the implied implicit contradictions in, in, in the direction that we've had. So, again, it's the commercial displacement, the housing displacement, and the mobility displacement that we would want to address. And I hope that you would find a way to connect it with the Bergamot expansion of capacity, which is a real realization on the part of the planning commission after we finish the housing element that we maybe had kind of underestimated what was possible and fair in Bergamot. And that we ought to have the opportunity to make that correction as well. On all sides, fair, citywide, yeah.
So unless there's other comments, that dovetails right into the next comment, question of, of what we do in Bergamot right now. And I really think that's where density needs to go, but based on this conversation, I, I'm, well, actually, I was going to say, I guess staff just clarified something for me, that if we upzone something to, if we upzone something today, we could still change it, it was, it's what happened in two thousand eight. Go ahead, Commissioner Fonda.
Oh, it's a no risk thing, I mean, in other words, we, we should try this. And I think that if we are going to put additional density, I think it's more valuable to put it around transit stops than to have it be smeared evenly throughout the whole city. I think there's a net value to that.
Are, are we saying right now that we want to go to the three, to the three point two five and seventy? Does anybody, anybody object to that?
And even there was a proposal about a specific property being heightened, though, or a specific area, let's say.
Yeah, it's a block, it's a block, not a property.
Right. So I, I would, I would be comfortable with that.
Okay, so that's, we got that done quickly, let's, let's take a win and move on.
Comment about that, I just wanted to, just to assert or support the, the motion or the drople. Sorry, that, I think that this idea really does support fair housing, just in that the whole idea of fair housing is housing for everyone, everywhere, and it's not a designation for affordable housing in this area, which could be a problem. But it's all kinds of housing in this area too, where nothing, where, you know, homes aren't being displaced. And we have large lots, so it gives us a lot of opportunity for abundant housing.
Yes.
Great. Okay, so moving down, moving down this discussion topic, starting on page ten, there are other things that we want to hash out. I guess I would bring up the question to staff. I'm now on page twelve of the staff report about density bonus and this issue of a timeline. What, what is your thought on that, and what is, what, what could be your response?
What page are you on?
I'm on page twelve, where we talk about dens, it's just, it's, it's the density bonus section of the staff report, and so that's where I brought it up.
So, yeah, so in terms of, like, a density bonus application is not separate from an entitlement application. So I think when we were talking about the, I think it's, it was actually under the streamlined approvals process, you know, our proposal is to apply the SB three thirty timeframes for providing comments on all housing projects, because there, there is overlap with respect to state density bonus law, they're supposed to, you know, submit that request at the time the application is deemed complete. And, you know, that may or may not always be the case, you know, but we do work with, with applicants to, you know, what, what we have seen most often is that density bonus requests are coming in, and then they're amended repeatedly as the project evolves, I guess. And, you know, the request for incentives and concessions changes, so in terms of time, and it's like, it's, it's.
But what you're saying, I think what you're saying is.
Timelines as applications, yeah.
Right, it's just like any other application that gets covered by those timelines, and we have defined timelines, so we've addressed this.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Leslie, you were the one who really wanted to go this way, and you walked away. So I'm going to ask you this question on the.
Sorry, really quickly, we have spent a lot of time talking about, you know, sort of new housing laws, I do want to acknowledge whatever work you all do, have a look at AB twenty eleven. Make sure we're not, you know, I, I want to fight this fight, but let's make sure that what we're talking about is not completely eviscerated by AB twenty eleven.
Great.
Jim?
Yes.
In, in terms of the timeline, we don't have a timeline for administrative approvals, do we?
For administrative approvals?
We have a density bonus timeline.
Well, what I heard was they're following the, the, where you have to get, well, Jean, what did you just say, thirty days to deem complete, and then after that, then there's, there are timelines to process the cases as long as all of the responses, the response, once the applicant has responded.
Right. It's just continuing to carry through those timelines, even after the initial submittal, because under SB three thirty, it's just the initial submittal. We would apply those to subsequent resubmittals as well.
So, okay, so let's just talk about it, let's make sure everybody understands it, so now I've submitted a case to you. Thirty days, you come back to me, and you say, you know, Jim, you missed X, Y, and Z. I now respond in forty-five days, because it takes me time to get, to get, to get it together. And now you have another thirty days to tell me whether it is deemed complete or not. And let's say at that point, I got my act together and I'm deemed complete. What is the processing timeline, is there a definitive timeline after that?
There, there is, yeah, so depending on the size of the project, it's basically below or above one hundred and fifty units. So if it's less than one hundred and fifty units, then we have thirty days to provide the code compliance comments, if it's more than one hundred and fifty units, then it's sixty days. And under SB three thirty, it basically is just for that, like, initial round of review, we would propose to continue to extend that to subsequent rounds, so, you know, we, let's say we deliver the comments, and then.
The question, the question I'm asking, Jean, is now I've gotten to a point where I'm compliant. And so you can't, you're not going to write any more letters to me that I'm not compliant, I'm compliant, how, is there a timeline to process the case at that point?
We are not, we are not proposing a total timeline to process case. You know, if that's the question, and I think we've had, I, I don't, I'm not sure of any more to say about that, you know, in terms of the, the reasoning as to why, because I think one of the key questions is, you know, if it's not met, then what? And I've yet to hear, you know, any response as to, you know, what happens if that timeline is not met in terms of, you know, approving the, the case itself, you know, but I think what's, once it's, once it's compliant, it's just, you know, it's, an AA is the preparation of the table. Really, you know, comparing the standards, like it would already, that work would have been done, so maybe it's, you know, a handful of, you know, sometimes a week or couple of weeks just for it to be completed and then signed, so it's not like, you know, what, once the review is complete, the, you know, the, the work to, you know, prepare that determination is, you know, fairly straightforward at that point.
Okay, well, I'm hearing, I, I don't know whether we, I don't know whether we're meeting state law at this point or not, you guys are the professionals, and, and the attorneys have to look at this, so as long as you guys think you're meeting that requirement, we'll.
We are, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Going back to Commissioner Lambert, you, you have other comments that you want to go through on this, this section before we go back to the policy discussions?
Well, I have a lot of questions about downtown, I was still, what are.
We're moving through, at your request, I'm moving through, starting at page ten, going through these old, these old issues. And making sure that staff has outlined them properly, and where we have disagreements, we're going to want to discuss through those.
Okay, just a second.
So this goes for all the commissioners, I'm looking at staff, staff report page ten and eleven, if anybody has comments on those, this is the time to bring it up.
I have a problem with the, the staff's response to the can't do concurrent process and have demo permits and preliminary SB three thirty applications, I, I see absolutely no reason for not doing that. Well, I mean, that is, that is. That is streamlining.
Can I just add to that, that the solution of shortening the timeline to thirty days is very unacceptable.
No, that, that's not, that's not what they're, what they're saying is that we need to get a final application, which is six months after you submit your preliminary application. Then, the final as an application, you have to have a historic determination. That's not the same as submitting it at the same time as preliminary.
Right, well, the concurrent review is not a problem if the applicant agrees to it and understands the risk.
Of course.
Yeah, so they don't have.
Their risk, it's their risk.
Yeah, I mean, I think that should be an option for applicants that are willing to take that.
I do too, I do too.
But I don't.
And if they get a designation, then they're going to have to stop everything and redo it.
And suffer the pain.
Plus their pain, not ours. So that's, that's where I stand on that.
Right, but I still, I really need to be very clear that that other alternate, alternative was entirely unacceptable, because the landmarks commission.
I totally agree with, I totally agree with you, but, but it's the final app, because they have the historic designation, not the preliminary, and that's fine.
Right, we just want to make sure that that solution goes away.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page here with respect to this thirty day timeline, so in a preliminary application, an applicant is required to note on the application, there's a series of questions, you know, is there a historic, is there a historic resource on site, right, so that's something that's probably already designated. This other thirty day discussion that the planning manager mentioned means that if it, it appears to be that if there is no determination within the first thirty days after the application is determined complete on whether or not something is a historic resource, you lose the opportunity to determine it as a historic resource.
But that's the final, final application, not the preliminary. And that works.
But if you, if you do it, are you talking about concurrently with the SB three thirty application or filing concurrently with the development application?
With the SB three thirty application.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify, because I was, I was hearing concurrent filing with the actual final development.
No, 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 the preliminary.
Right. So, yeah, the thirty days I was talking about was a different.
No, that won't work.
Yeah, that, okay, so you know what I meant by that.
Right.
Okay.
You two guys know what you meant, the staff know what you mean by that.
No, it's all okay, Jim, just trust us.
Yeah. No, staff was offering instead of allowing concurrent review for landmarks designation, that they make the seventy-five day waiting period shorter. But basically, that idea precludes the possibility, basically, it's in contrast to what the existing code says, and we're now functioning under an IZO. And it assumes that an IZO that is not made permanent is going to be the version that is made permanent, which many people in preservation do not feel due to occur exactly as proposed.
Okay, so I'm sorry, one more, one more clarification, so I, so putting aside that thirty day that, that Commissioner Fresco was just speaking about, so if we're just talking about seventy-five days, thirty days, it doesn't matter, it's when you can file this application. As, as the rules are now, you could file that seventy-five day application in that hundred and eighty day period. You're not precluded from doing that. And probably you have to file within that hundred and eighty day period, because you have to clear it, right, you have to clear the seventy-five days before you file your actual development permit application.
I thought you had.
So that's how it works, that's how it works right now, right, so I just wanted to clarify that piece.
Okay, but I like that.
So, so when somebody files their initial application and then concurrent with the seventy-five days, what is happening in the interim between that and the, the next application? Are they just waiting for staff to accept the first, the initial preliminary application?
So I'll, I'll let the planning manager hop in, but are you talking about the hundred and eighty day period?
Right.
Between the preliminary application and the development application, okay. So, the planning manager can answer, but nothing has to happen in that time, and they do not have to wait the full hundred and eighty days.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, so could somebody, in theory, submit the preliminary and then the full application, like, oh, the next day?
Yeah, in theory, in theory, they could, but this is where it, it's the confluence of SB three thirties, you know, allowances and this demolition permit process, because our rules currently state that you cannot file that formal application until that seventy-five day waiting.
Right, the permanent.
The way it stands now.
The formal application, right?
So the way it stands now is they, basically, if there's an HR, a building over forty years old that they want to demolish for their project. That they want to demolish for their project, then they can't file the application until between seventy-five and a hundred and eighty.
That's the, that's the, that's the final application.
Right.
Right, the final applic-, yeah, so you, you always, like, under our current rules, you, you have to clear that, that seventy-five day waiting period in the demo. Before, so in theory, yes, could, could you file, like, could you file that demo permit application, like, the day after you file the preliminary? Yes, you could. You know, could you file the formal application? Immediately, no, no, you couldn't, because if, i- i- in the case where you had to demolish something, you had to have cleared that seventy-five days. So there's a distinction, preliminary and.
So the current process is fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, cool.
Wow. Glad we, glad we got there.
That was really helpful, actually.
Um. Okay, so. This, I think, uh, we're also in this area where we talk about, this is an area about the downtown. Streamlining, and we saw some interesting, interesting moves tonight. One, we, we went from the sixty-five foot. Limit to a ninety thousand square foot limit to a suggestion of why aren't we consistent with the entire city?
Good question.
Good question.
I, I tend to agree that why wouldn't it be, I mean, again, I think this is where we want our development. It's near transit. And it's where all the jobs are. Uh, high opportunity area, so why wouldn't we make it consistent, staff? Could you kind of give us your reasoning on that?
Uh, this is in terms of the application processing thresholds.
Yes. When a DRP is script.
I mean, I think that, you know, we were. As, like I, you know, this, this kind of came about upon second look, um, in the downtown, but I think we. We, we were just trying to be consistent with, uh, council's prior direction on this. Fully acknowledging, you know, this is, uh, a new concept, you know, that is, that is being presented. Uh, fairly late in, in, in the game, but, um, you know, something that I think solves, you know, some of the. The mental gymnastics, you know, we've had and. You know, having to go down the road of, of retaining tiers. To begin with, but. You know, I think that maybe. If, if I could maybe talk about them in parallel, like, um, in the rest of the city, other than downtown, that one acre threshold. Is something that council had put in the IZO and it was to like distinguish, you know, larger projects versus. Other ones in the rest of the city. In the downtown, you know, there really are no sites over an acre. Um, that's analysis, you know, we, we did when the process changes were, were, were done to deal with, um, tier three and also primarily tier. Tier three and tier two projects, um, you know, back in the summer or fall of. Twenty twenty, so, you know, this ninety thousand square foot threshold. Like I, it, it would apply only the NV and the TA zones, and it's only for triple lots, and I think it's a way to distinguish. In parallel with the rest of the city, uh, um, the distinction between sort of larger projects and other more typical projects. In the downtown, so although the thresholds aren't exactly the same, like. If we applied the one acre in downtown, it would probably not apply to hardly anything. You know, and, and, and if that's the principle, and again, you know, we're just kind of explaining our reasoning given. Trying to reconcile. Council's prior direction on this and, you know, the principles that are being applied citywide.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert.
Uh, well, I think we have a number two that we have a couple of new council members, so the direction may be different when it all comes to them. Uh, I can see no reason we have different standards downtown than we have elsewhere. You can do an eighty-four foot, four point O FAR. Um, in Bergamot with a, an AA, uh, why not downtown? Downtown is, should be a very high priority for this downtown housing development. And I'm assuming we just talked about code compliant projects, right?
Code compliant projects, that's great, yes.
I, I can see, see no reason, it makes no sense to differentiate, particularly given the importance of downtown.
Commissioner Lambert.
Uh, yeah, I agree with all of that, and I also have serious concerns about feasibility, as I mentioned. So, yes, we should, if we've, if our, if our policymaking on streamlining has evolved. Then it should evolve and capture the downtown as it evolves. We shouldn't leave the downtown in amber while we, while we move forward citywide.
Okay, Commissioner Leraskin?
Yeah, I agree with what's just been said, and I'll just drop a footnote here or two to say. You know, if we are going to think seriously about. Uh, incentivizing assets downtown, we should also consider going higher in the NV areas downtown, but, uh. Realize that's a little bit of a separate discussion.
Uh, I, I appreciate that, but that would spin us into a long conversation. Okay, so I, is there anybody at this, I mean, I haven't heard from Commissioner Tolkien or Fondamentarty on this. I do. I do like kind of a streamlined approach or a consistent approach good throughout the city. Go ahead, Commissioner Fondamentarty.
I agree with that, consistently throughout the city.
You're, you're muted, sir.
I also agree, we should streamline the whole city in terms of. I, I think we should, you know, go ahead with the, the zoning changes. And not write letters to the state, truthfully. At this point. And, um. I think you're just going to muddy the waters.
Okay, but you're, you're okay, your, your first statement was what we wanted to hear, which is you're, you want consistency throughout the city. So I think, I think we're giving you, I think there's solid direction from the council, the commission at least, on where we, we would like to see that go.
So ju- ju- just for clarity, you're looking for a uniform one acre threshold. Uh, DR threshold, like throughout the whole city, including the downtown?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Correct. I, I don't know that, I, I'm just gonna say, I don't know that we're endorsing the one, the one acre, but that's kind of given to us as a given, but. But, um, but that's what we're saying to you tonight, yes. Okay, so, Commission, let's, let's go down, and so anybody else have other questions on, or comments on pages? Ten or eleven with down, this is downtown. Um, Bergamon area. Loose. I, I guess I have a question for staff, just for my own edification. On page thirteen, we talked about the AHPP and says. Staff proposes to revise maps where offsite affordable housing can be. Located based on the existing concentrations. I know you showed us a map. Can you walk me through that again and tell me exactly what that means?
Uh, sure, Rachel, can you show slide twenty-four?
And, and again, I'm coming from the perspective of, like, I really want to see housing near transit, so I want to, that's really where my focus is, is. Are we allowing that near transit?
Certainly, um, so you can see, hopefully that map is possible to see. Though, uh, we didn't have the, the other map, but you probably remember it, 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 uh, basically included like three. Of the census tracts that run right along the I-ten freeway, um. Kind of starting from around like Cloverfield going westward, and it included the, almost the entire downtown. Um, and that was the mapping that came out of Cal EPA's, uh, disadvantaged communities. Mapping, which was our original proposal. You know, a- and again, this came out of the whole housing element discussion. I think in seeing how much of an area that was covering. There was kind of concern expressed, you know, whether that was the right source to be using, so. We turn back to mapping that we've done before in terms of. Um, existing concentrations of a hundred percent affordable housing throughout the city. The big dots that you see on the map represent sort of larger, uh, projects and the smaller ones are smaller ones, so. I think visually, um, you know, you can see that there are sort of, uh, more. Um, concentrations of those dots relative to other areas of the city, um. Probably in particular, in and around the, the Pico neighborhood is where you see a larger concentration of that. You know, versus, for example, uh, Wilmont or Mid-City. Um, you know, or Sunset Park, uh, for, for that matter, I think, you know, just, just kind of using that as a point of comparison where you see the. Concentration of dots, so I think, um, some of our initial thinking, I don't think we've come up with something concrete, but. Um, I think in talking with the Housing Commission, at least, you know, there was some discussion of, you know, maybe it's the area sort of, um. I'll just put a boundary out there of like Pico. Lincoln, probably roughly Colorado. To, uh, Cloverfield, um, as an area to start. I think as another alternative, it could also. Uh, we could consider the Pico neighborhood, um, as mapped currently in the zoning code. Um, in section nine oh four, uh, oh two oh, and. I think, uh, we can probably bring up that boundary for you to view as well, um, we just have to pull up the zoning code. And show that to you, but that, that's the idea is to. Kind of geographically map it ourselves as opposed to relying on the state mapping and the basis for it would be. Um, to not add to existing concentrations of affordable housing, because, again, this is only in the instance where. There's a market rate project and then they, um, are putting their offsite affordable units elsewhere. The existing code, um, requires that those affordable units be within a quarter mile. And the principle behind it is that you don't have market rate. You know, just in one area of the city, and then you put all of the affordable units, like, you know, really far away somewhere else, um.
Okay, well, so you, you've answered like kind of my question, so it, it does allow them to go near the downtown transit station and the Bergamot station. But based on the two descriptions you said, we carve out the fourteenth or the seventeenth street. So I would urge you to kind of consider maybe the northern boundary is the ten freeway, because that's really where the, the demarcation is before, where the. The concentration is. And that allow, that opens up another transit portal for us.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Anybody object to that on the commission?
Well. I, I'm not, yeah, I mean. I get where you're going with it. I'm not comfortable using the freeway, which. Created redlining and actively displaced people as.
Didn't create the redline, just to be.
Well, no, it didn't create the redlining, but it crea-, it actively displaced people and the city just apologized for the displacement. Of the African-American community. I feel like using it as a named border is not appropriate. If we are trying to sort out. Some of these boundaries, um, because I think it's giving the freeway power, like, power, so to speak, that it should not have. So.
Use Olympic, use Olympic then.
That would probably be more appropriate is to use Olympic rather than the, rather than the freeway, although Olympic is, right, I mean, yeah, that makes more sense to me.
Again, all I'm trying to do is make sure that we can get, if, if that housing has the opportunity to go near the transit portal, that's all I'm trying to get to.
Well, Olympic is a better, uh, I mean, because the, the, the how, the transit, the transit corridor is along Colorado, so.
Well, Olympic works for me. It works, it works fine.
Okay. Let's, we, and we can't go further north?
Well, then, then we go to, then we cut out the transit, because the, the next one is.
Right, 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 no, 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 well, what if we went? What if we went south of the, yeah, I guess Olympic is fine, because there's not much housing south of Olympic anyway, okay.
Commissioner Lambert.
I, I just want to be clear that, uh, this is only about offsite AHPP we're talking about. Clearly, it doesn't, it doesn't stop the city from doing affordable housing in Pico, as you probably know, there are four projects either finished or under construction. Uh, now in the Pico neighborhood is.
Yeah, Jean, Jean, Jean did comment. She did mention that in her.
Yeah, what we're doing has absolutely no impact on the city's housing side of decisions. Thanks.
Right. Okay, let's keep moving, I.
I have a question on page eleven.
Go ahead.
Yeah, can, can we just get some clarity, because the staff did not agree with us about the daylight plane? And I just wanted to know where we are landing. So if staff doesn't agree with us, what is? What is the implication of not creating a new standard and keeping it as a by right incentive or concession?
Yeah, so that's, it's not that we weren't agreeing, so we, we were not agreeing with creating a new standard, so we would retain. Daylight plane as a standard, because I think there was discussion about eliminating it. Or changing it, um, but instead, it would be on the by right menu of incentives and concessions.
Okay.
In terms of allowing people the flexibility to, you know, modify it, eliminate it, you know, what have you, just because it's a little bit contextual. For projects, um, but what we would change with respect to the standard. Is the starting point for measurements, so it would be based on the maximum height of the adjacent residential district. And the measuring from the residential parcel line instead of the setback line.
Great, okay.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. That's helpful.
Okay. Let's, let's try to.
And did staff respond to the top? Yeah, the top of page twelve, the absence of a staff respond, are, are you still with us? Like, did, where you're silent, are you, um? Where, where, where you're silent, you agree?
Uh, do you know which, which one?
Yeah, give a specific.
Like, like, for example, like, like, for example, the, um, Hank Koenig's slope. Requirement.
Yeah, no, we, we are implementing that, because I think maybe we weren't specific, but we said, you know, we agree with. Direction.
I think you mentioned that in your presentation tonight, the two person.
Okay, I must, I apologize for that, Ben, okay.
Sorry, we weren't specific. I think in, in the table, it says we agree with the direction on outdoor living area. Which encompassed.
Ah, okay, so that recovering the whole, yeah, I heard you say that, I just wasn't sure whether that applied to the, all of the things below it or, or. Or not, okay, perfect. Good deal.
Okay, I'm. I don't have any more comments in that section, unless other people do, we can go to the policy admission.
I have a moderate.
Can, sorry, we had a. Can, can, can we just, um, I'm just reviewing the presentation. We did have a question about adding, um. Restaurant and retail as a primitive land use. In these new employment districts, I mean, those are uses that just, you know, we're never even in there. I, I presume there's probably no objection to that.
Nope. Neighborhood serving, neighborhood serving type of uses?
Yeah, can you add neighborhood serving uses? I, is, I just forgive me for not knowing this exactly, but something like a. Retail includes services. And not just goods, right? So like a dry cleaner is also retail in, in our.
Exactly, yes, yeah, yeah. These are sort of like general use classifications, yeah.
Yeah. Cool. I have something on page fourteen, if we're there yet.
I think we're there yet.
Okay, so, so I understand, um, staff's disagreement with. PC direction to allow market rate units in, um. Market in, in moderate, um, overlay projects. However. What I would like to do is bring a, a scalpel rather than an ax to this. Measure R. Typically directs us to focus on a hundred percent and lower income. I would like to make it explicit that in the moderate overlays, you can go to one twenty.
It says, it says that.
Okay.
Right, that's definitely, it'd be up to one twenty.
Okay, terrific. I just want, because we have an incentive in Santa Monica to encourage the eighty to a hundred percent, because it counts for measure R. And I want that too, but I also want to make sure we're going up to one twenty, because we need that. I'm, I'm, you know, I would go high, I would go a little bit higher, but I get staff disagrees with that, so. Um, I just want to make sure one twenty is cool.
One twenty is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for a family of four.
I, I under, I kind of.
I was, I was surprised when I saw that.
Yeah, no, but I, I understand that, and it's also, housing is really expensive.
All right, so let's, 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 yeah, let's just kind of knock this out. We're, we're in a long meeting, long meeting already. What else? Anybody else have comments or questions up to page sixteen?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna check out, Jim.
Okay. Um, and then Jean, is there anything that we have missed in that section that you needed us to talk about?
Um, I think the streamlined design review, I'd like to hear some feedback about, um. Our ideas for, uh, in terms of allowing, uh, ARV review to occur after entitlement. In that situation, you know, where it's kind of the last procedural step, and we don't want to hold up. Issuance of an entitlement as opposed to. You know, just the applicant deciding at some point that they want to have the ARV review afterwards.
Commissioner Lambert.
What's wrong with leaving it up to the applicant?
I think because we did commit to try and compress the, the process together, what we're trying to do is to have. Concurrent processing of the design review and the entitlement. Together, um, understanding, you know, the presentation we gave, that it's not.
I understand all that.
And, you know, that we, we, we try and do that early on. And, but if there's a case, you know, where. You know, design review is like the last step, we've completed our code compliance, we would of course go ahead and issue. You know, the entitlement and then allow the design review to occur afterwards, but I think we're trying to make sure that it's not losing time, yeah.
But if a developer chooses to prolong the process because doesn't feel that he's got the design stuff ready for entitlements, does the developer be able to wait for the ARV? It's in, it's basically his money.
And this gets back to that whole discussion we had that people don't get their the financing to do, I mean, there's, there's a cost issue in there too. As you get your entitlement, then you can really do pour into your design more and get all the although staff assured us last time that they were streamlining that, streamlining the requirements.
Before we lose Leslie, can we have, can we talk about parking?
No, 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 let us finish this, let us finish this discussion because we're
Oh, yeah, no, asking before we, before Leslie leaves, can we just make sure we get
That is gonna go on forever, Sean. I don't have, believe me.
Okay.
Let's Jean, ask the question again and we'll give you a straight answer this time. I mean, I don't think we didn't give you a straight answer, but let us get to
Okay, so, yeah, for for the streamlining design review, um, the question was, you know, does the commission agree with the staff proposal to allow ARV review to occur after entitlements in instances where the entitlement review is complete and the only remaining procedural step is ARV approval? Understanding, you know, that we we the program language is there will not be unreasonable procedural delays, so we are adjusting, we would be adjusting sort of the level of review. The ARBs, when the ARB did their their study session, they understood that, you know, and I think there's commitment to also, um, you know, kind of revise the process, you know, to sort of make this more efficient.
And this would be the only option would do it after entitlement. Is that what I'm understanding?
Right, which is, which is what we do now and it feels like, you know, what what you end up having, happening is the land entitlement occurs, design review is there and then it's subject, you know, potentially to appeal, yeah.
That's more typical. I I think we should, I think we should go with that.
The post entitlement?
Post entitlement.
Agree.
We can use a little comfort with all these changes. Okay.
Okay, folks. Wish me luck.
Good luck, Leslie.
I don't think they lose many people with this procedure, do they?
Where are you when parking?
It said, look, Sean, she, Sean, she's making, she's gotta go.
I gotta go, Sean. This is pretty.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. Okay, so now I suggest we go back. I think our next move is to go back to the top of the staff report where we have these policy discussions and it would be really helpful, I think, if we use the the PowerPoint to walk us through those and we try to tip, check those off as fast as comprehensively and quickly as we
So I think the first one, this is the minimum parking, so the policy question here is, and maybe if you can show the map, Rachel, that probably illustrates it better in terms of like how it kind of cuts through neighborhoods. So we were just saying, you know, you have a situation where you have two properties on either side of a street and they have completely different minimum parking requirements. You know, for just consistency, ease of implementation. The next slide, I think, you know, includes the proposal of should the city, there's two options here that we're presenting. Do we want to consider eliminating parking requirements for all housing projects located outside the half mile transit? So this would be all housing projects citywide, but except for the R one zones, we did some analysis that about seventy three percent of non residential and multi unit zone parcels in the city are within a half mile of transit. And so there's, you know, thirty seven percent of those parcels that aren't, so the vast majority are within that half mile. So it seems to make sense for consistency. You might want to expand that no minimum parking requirement, you know, but other than the R one zone. The second option is that if we didn't want to go that expansive, you know, we could consider also instead eliminating minimum parking requirements for housing projects within only the non residential zones. So this would be only commercial districts in the city and you can see there that that would be, you know, eighty four percent of the non residential zones are within a half mile of transit. And so you're leaving, you know, a small percentage of those commercial districts have minimum parking requirements. I mean, in in either case, you know, sensibly, it seems like you're you're capturing such a large area, you might as well expand it to the rest because like you said, it was just cutting through some streets and some neighborhoods, it didn't sort of make a lot of sense for implementation.
Okay, the commission, how? What do you guys think about this? Commissioner Presko first, please.
So what was my question? Oh, yeah, so I just want to hear you say, even though I kind of know the answer, that today's minimum parking requirements are basically a carefully studied analysis of the necessary amount of parking. With that, is that a correct assumption and are is, are those conclusions still accurate?
Um, I mean, I think they were definitely looked at as part of, as part of the twenty fifteen zoning ordinance. You know, it goes through the public process, you know, they were probably what what you see in the twenty fifteen code is a reduction from what it was in, you know, what we call the sort of eighty eight code, like the older code. There was probably discussion at the time to even lower them further, but this is, you know, what you see in the code now is kind of, you know, what ended up happening in terms of a, what we call the parking overlay one, which is the area closest to transit, half mile of transit, and then the areas outside the rest of the city. But yeah, generally speaking, you know, they were intended to line up with, you know, what would be appropriate minimum parking requirements.
So, so that means that this is the minimum people have to deliver and they could build more, so do they ever?
Well, we have parking maximums in the code as well, so there's, there's minimums and then you can't build more than I believe it's, I'm going off the top of my head, like ten percent, I think, over
Practice, I'm talking about in practice, do people often build more than the minimum or is that almost never happen?
No, that, I I I don't think we normally see people building over the minimum.
Okay, cool. So then let's do number one and make the existing the maximum. That's my suggestion.
That was gonna be what mine was too, so I'll second that.
Who, I was leaning towards two, but I can, I can be persuaded by these arguments. What other commissioners have comments on this?
Option one.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Fondabarnardi, you're, you're speaking, but we can't hear you. And then Commissioner
I don't agree with making the minimum the maximum. I think there should be no maximum. There should be a minimum. We should let the market forces, people want to go over that because what's going to happen is different parts and different blocks are going to be impacted differently. And so if someone wants to make sure that all the people that are coming there, but either residents or visitors or people who are using the commercial ground floor services have enough parking, they're going to build it and they might be in a better position than everybody else that really skimped on their parking. I don't think we need to put a maximum.
Okay, so it it might, I might be wrong here, but it seems to me we're we're muddling to, we're putting together two policy questions, one and two. I, I think the maximum is the next one we're going to come to.
Okay, so then I would vote for option one.
Okay. So I hear, well, Commissioner Raskin, do you want to opine on this?
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, my opinion on this has evolved, but I'd be in favor of getting rid of parking minimums. Minimum, minimums in all residential zones, including R one.
So you're going for, you're going for, I mean, you're actually wanting a third option, but you're closer to one? Okay. I hear a consensus at one. Commissioner Landers?
Yeah, I I was gonna say that to Commissioner Raskin's point, in R one, we have, uh, you know, we have the question pending on the the ADU parking and I don't remember off the top of my head what the parking issue, what the parking requirements are for SB nine, but I think we're already heading toward a world where there would not be incremental parking requirements for subdivisions in R one. So if we don't want to have to deal with this again in, you know, three to five years, we might as well simply eliminate parking requirements for all housing. Uh, but I'm fine with option one because I think the state is taking care of what needs to be taken care of in R one.
Okay, so let's go with option one and let's move on to the question of maximum. And I'm going to say for the record, I support Commissioner Fondabarnardi. We should not have maximums and if so what other comments do we have on that?
So this is question three, uh, we'll, we'll go back to two in a moment, but since we're talking about parking maximums, the DCP doesn't have minimum parking requirements that was eliminated. It does have parking maximums. Part of the principle around parking maximums is sort of also prevent the overbuilding of parking. That was downtown, obviously, is one of the most transit accessible areas in the entire city, you know, so that was what was driving that. So the question here is within half mile of transit, you know, being in, eliminating minimum parking requirement, should maximum parking limits also be established in these areas? And what should those maximums be? I think currently as proposed, we were thinking about using the parking overlay one minimum serving as the new maximum parking limits. So that's the question to the commission.
Okay, Commissioner Landers?
Very quickly, I mean, I, I support you and and Commissioner Fondabarnardi on this. My question for staff before we come back with a final version is, and I want to make sure, and I don't want to miss ask the question, but are we, let's make sure we're not doing something that impacts affordable housing financing. I have heard sometimes that the way we word our parking requirements or lack thereof can have an unintended negative effect on the way that they can build their housing, so I want to make sure that we don't accidentally write something that hurts them. So that's all. But in general, I agree with eliminating the maximum.
Sorry, can can you maybe be more specific? I'm not sure I've heard
Something, when we last took up parking requirements, we heard from affordable housing providers who um, and it may be it's just been in the era of, you know, low gas prices and things like that, but they typically like to provide the minimums, parking minimums in affordable housing and when we when we eliminate them completely, it had some effect on what happened when they went to the bank for financing. I don't want to say it wrong because I don't want us to get it wrong and I don't want to get it wrong, but I just what I would suggest is when there's a draft policy is let's make sure that we are here, you know, that as we have the opportunity here from the public, all the public, but I just wanted to flag it because that was the only group that really, everybody else was super in favor of it and then I remember hearing some worry. Now, it may be that times have changed and we don't have to worry about it and VMT is what matters at this point and we should make that policy and I, and I would be fine with that, but I just don't want to get to the day after this is enacted and have them go, oops.
But we're, it seems to me though, Sean, I mean, I do want to be sensitive of that, but it seems to me we're giving them the ability to put in as much parking as they need for their project and it meets their fire answer.
I I would have thought that, but I'm just asking it to be sure. And I'm, and maybe, you know, maybe the folks who are listening who work with them will just weigh in.
I I bet they will.
But I'm, I'm happy to eliminate the maximum and have no, you know, zero minimum and no maximum.
Okay, so that's our policy direction on that. And then let's go back. I apologize, I jumped over. The requirement of adding addition, adding parking when you add a unit or have a room or a bedroom.
There's policy question two, yeah.
I think Jean with 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 the answer to policy question one, this policy question actually is moot.
Yeah.
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 So it's good.
Right.
That's all. And it's, it's ADU, I mean, also it reflects the, I mean, nobody's, if somebody adds a unit on those properties, it's an ADU unit, which they don't have to add parking anyway, so. Yeah, smooth.
And, oh, oh, I guess just to clarify on policy question one, it was no minimum parking requirements and, sorry, just to clarify, was that except the R one zones or was that including the R one zones?
They can accept the R one zones.
Yeah.
Except the R one zones, okay.
So then, I think we're at number four?
Yes. So this is AB twenty ninety seven does not explicitly prohibit the replacement of existing parking. So this is a case of a housing project within half mile of transit if it retains an existing use and removes the required parking for that existing use, should the project be required to replace the displaced parking? Just providing additional context to that, it, I I think what we're talking about is should they be be required to replace the required parking? So the parking that, you know, the project was entitled with. We came across this after parking minimums were eliminated in the DCP. And, you know, for, if we wanted to be consistent with the downtown, we do require that, you know, people retain the parking that they have onsite in the DCP, it's up to the maximums. If we didn't have maximums in this case, you know, a fallback will be that, you know, you retain what you were entitled with, so you're, you're required to replace your, what was previously required parking. You know, but anything above that could be removed and obviously anything new would not have any minimum parking requirements.
Jean, I have a question, I may. How is this different than that discussion we had, which was seen to be governing the A lots? Where we were saying they wouldn't have to replace all the parking. They would be able to take out a certain percentage to be determined. How is this different than that?
That is in the case of it, it, it is somewhat related because I think it's, I think in in that one you gave direction like, yes, you could, you have to replace some, but maybe not all of it, like a percentage of it. So, you know, that's
Thing apply here, though, wouldn't the same thing apply here? Or what's different between that condition and this condition?
It could apply here. I think the distinction here is like whether the parking was required, what we call required parking, which was like, you know, they had a permit, you know, way back when and it required, you know, twenty, twenty parking spaces or whatever the case may be. But sometimes that's not the case with surface parking a lot. Sometimes that parking was just like extraneous, they just built it. Maybe, you know, it was built in the nineteen forties when there were no parking requirements and so that's just extra parking. You know, so it's, it was a little more open with these ones where you have parking that is onsite, like let's say in the strip mall or something, you know, like that. You know, where the parking, you know, it was entitled or was required as part of the entitlement. You know, if they were to redevelop, you know, that portion of the site, like would they need to replace it? So I think the distinguish, the distinction is like, is it required or is it non required parking?
Okay, Commissioner Landers?
I, I mean, I'm wondering, is there a middle ground that's something to look to the effect of they're required to meet the current standard or what they were vested with, whichever is less?
Well.
Because they could have, they could have invested at a time when there was a very high parking requirement, which we as a matter of policy don't support. But there may have been some use cases where there is a reason to have certain types of parking as a requirement and we would not want them to have to go back all the way to where they were, but you know, they could come back to what the rule is now.
But the, the rule is now, the rule is now is you can build, you build, for new stuff, it's build what is most appropriate for your project.
But for commercial outside the downtown?
Within, this is within a half a mile of transit, right? Isn't that what we're talking about?
We are, but I'm still, I mean, if we have healthcare uses that have parking requirements so that patients can park, don't, are not parking three blocks away, a meter and they can't drive, you know what I'm saying, like?
I I hear you, but I think, I think, Sean, if I'm thinking this correctly, and I could be wrong, is we've said there's no minimums and there's no maximums.
This is this is retaining an existing commercial use. I'm talking about the requirement on the commercial use. I'm not talking about adding how, I'm not talking about a parking requirement for housing. They're saying
I'm not either. It's
Okay.
It, it applies to the, the state eliminated commercial parking within half a mile of transit. And for new construction, what they're asking is if it, if they're going to maintain an existing use
Yes.
and add something else, do they have to rebuild all the parking? And add something else, do they have to rebuild all the parking? And we have, as a commission, we have said, there's no, for new construction, there's no minimum, there's no maximum.
Correct, agreed.
Which doesn't really make sense to make the existing replace their parking. Because in a way, it will incentivize people to tear down existing stuff. Because then they get zero parking. That's how I'm thinking about it.
For clarifications, just to help you guide your answers, what you just voted on for option one was to eliminate parking for all housing projects. So if a, if a housing project was to say develop outside of the half mile and was to retain an existing commercial use, that existing commercial use outside of the half mile would still have to provide parking because we are only addressing parking for housing right now. So this question pertains to if a housing project is within half a mile of transit and retains that commercial use, AB 2097 doesn't say that we can, that we, that we can't require the replacement of it. What we're asking the commission tonight is if you would have that required parking be replaced if that project was to displace the parking.
And I'm, and I'm saying, what is an alternative to going all the way to zero? And I'm asking, what is the alternative to going all the way to zero? I can live with going, I mean, like if the commission wants to go all the way to zero, we'll go all the way to zero. But I think there could be some unintended consequences with retained uses that.
Yes, I understand. So I, I think it goes back to what Commissioner Fonda Bernardi was asking earlier. So in the prior direction, it was to replace that parking, but, you know, they would get a percentage reduction, like 10%. So that could be the commission's direction is to go further, to require the replacement by a reduction in amount of the required replacement.
And I think it would be based on what we would, you know, we would suggest is maybe basing it on, you know, what the entitled, what, what they, the parking they've required with, with their entitlement.
Wait, let me ask, right. So let me, let me ask a different question because this is actually came up. This came up two years ago with a parking replacement requirement for congregations building affordable housing that necessitated a corrective bill a year later because there was something of this, there was some confusion here. So let me say what I'm thinking, which is if a housing project within a half, and this is to the adaptive use insert, if a project, if a commercial building adapts to housing, and then 100%, like then all of the, all of the parking associated with that housing is unnecessary and excess therefore, right? So what I think we want to get to is they don't have to replace the displaced parking as long as the parking, total parking count does not come below the required parking for the existing use. Their, their converted parking, they should get all the credit, right, for all that excess parking. But I'm proposing that because those, that use is, could be a use that for which off-street parking is of value, like a medical office, that they need to keep that minimum. But if you have 50 parking spaces and you get rid of 48 of them and the medical office only needs two spaces, cool, you're done.
Yes. And that also prevents displacement of commercial uses in a way that could damage our community economically.
Correct.
Any, any other commissioners have comments on this? Commissioner Tolkien?
Yeah, since the state has decided that we don't need parking for residential or the commercial within a half mile, why don't we just let the, the developer consider what he needs to make his viable, a viable project? And since we've eliminated maximums and minimums.
Yeah, that's, thank, thank you. Any, Commissioner Raskin, where are you on this and Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Oh, hey, Alex. I'll, I'll jump in and say that I'm on board with what Commissioners Landers and Fresco were saying. I mean, in general, I think we should just give some flexibility here to the property owners.
How, how are we not, how, how is Commissioner Landers and Fresco giving them more flexibility? Then they don't have a minimum and they don't have a maximum. They provide what they're required.
Or not, but if the developer isn't the person who runs the business that's pre-existing on their site, then they don't have an incentive to provide adequate parking. If we leave it up to them and maybe they really want that space for some other use or to just get a new tenant that, or whatever.
Okay.
I don't know, I just feel like we should try to preserve existing businesses for stability.
Well, I would, I would agree with that, but I would be willing to take a parking reduction for the existing businesses. And I would even use a number like 20% because let's say you're building over an existing building that has an existing use, an active use. You're going to still need elevators, you're still going to need trash rooms, you're still going to need all that stuff for the new housing. And it's going to come primarily out of the parking lot. And that, that picture of the market on Montana kind of shows you what that's going to look like. You know, if they go up for the housing, they're going to, they still have to come down on that parking lot somewhere with some amenities, you know, trash chutes, elevators, transformer rooms, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it has to be something workable for the remaining tenants, but also workable for the actual typical construction that you would undertake.
That's clever.
Well, and Commissioner Fresco, that's a persuasive argument. So I'm, I'm, I am headed and I am now on your, your guys. I agree with you guys.
So if I can just reflect back what we're hearing and just tell me, because I, hopefully we got this right, is require the, to provide to, to replace a percentage of the existing parking or what they were required as part of their entitlements, whichever is less.
That makes sense to me.
And I, and I'm hearing like 20% as, as the percentage. Do you mean 80% or 20%? Sorry.
I meant 80%. If we would take, we would take away 20%. I would even say let's go to 75% if you want to use a round number. But something like that, you, you have to have some way of, of accommodating the new construction. We want to incentivize the new construction without penalizing the existing businesses. That's the thing.
Right. So a 70, so they would replace 75% of the existing parking or the, the parking required for the commercial entitlements only, not the housing entitlement, whichever is left, whichever is less.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for your.
Well, I worry that, I mean, I worry that you could end up with a project that has to replace 75% of the parking because their, their commercial entitlements require, you know, that they've, they've, you know, they've, they, they've removed all the commercial entitlement, right? Or, or right, that the, the uses that are retained have no parking requirement. Would that mean that goes to zero or that goes to 75%? I would want to go to zero at that point.
Well, it sounds like you already are at zero. It sounds in that particular example, you are already at zero. Because they were only aimed at the replaced quote existing parking. Well, if they've already removed it all, then there's none to replace.
So we're saying, I'll just make this something up that has a big parking requirement, a very, a large restaurant, right? Sometimes our large restaurants have had large parking requirements. So somebody decides to put a whole bunch of housing on top of a very large restaurant, like they are going to put housing on top of Valentino's, the old Valentino's. We're going to just knock down their housing, their parking requirement to 75% of what it would have been.
Well, what it is actually, unless you're in a condition where they've become non-conforming. But, but yeah, I mean, exactly that.
That's right. What if Valentino's, what if Valentino's has more parking than required by code?
Well, that's what, that's what John was.
It's only required.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, like Commissioners, I'm sorry, can we let Commissioner Tolkien?
Yeah, how, how can you put a percentage on this thing? There's so many different uses. If it was a market, if it was a restaurant, if it was something else that didn't need a lot of parking, if it had people off the street traffic. I mean, I think, you know, you just, you know, leave it up to the developer, these, these properties, their tenants will demand a certain amount of parking. And so that's what should be done. I mean, since this.
I think that's, I think that's right, but I think where we were going was to make the demand of the tenants a little stronger, encouraging tenants to stay in place instead of being pushed out. That's what we were trying to do, is strengthen their hand by giving them, you know, we already got 75. You're only giving up a quarter of your, of your available parking so that this particular owner can develop some housing. That's what we're really saying. That's going to, a quarter of this parking will be the penalty for the housing. But we're wanting, we want to keep those businesses in place. That's what, that's the whole point in some ways.
I understand that, Mario, but, but still give some latitude to the architects who are doing this to some flexibility in terms of the design. I mean, this could go down, let's say we take the, the Whole Foods market that was in the photo. You could build subterranean parking on that lot and do a lot more, put two levels of parking on that lot and still retain the market, still retain whatever other commercial restaurants that are on that street and put up housing above it. So I mean, it's, if we, if we arbitrary percentage on it.
Right, but Tolkien, the problem is that if you're describing subterranean parking, then you're a demo and a new build and you have no parking requirement at all. And so we're trying to preserve, we're trying to preserve the existing buildings and the existing tenants so they're not displaced. And that's why, I, I mean, I still prefer my.
Really a new building, that's, that particular site, let's say, has a big lot in the back. You could actually build your whole project on that back lot with subterranean parking and not disturb the buildings in the front. So.
Yeah. And, and but then Sam, the only question is, of that new construction that you're doing in that parking lot, that whole new building with its possibly subterranean multiple lot, how many of the spaces would have to be dedicated to the business that used to use that lot? Now that they no longer have the use of that lot? That's what we're debating is how much, how much, how much parking should be grandfathered in basically for the existing businesses? That's the discussion. And, and I think the, the value added, keep them from scraping the business. We want to make sure that some parking remains, but not so.
I understand what you're getting at, but it's, it's sort of like if I were developer, cutting your throat if you don't provide parking for the existing businesses or any business that would come in there is going to need some parking.
Right. And there could be a, there could be a disincentive because now if I'm that developer and I now have to rebuild that guy's parking, my solution is I can just demo his building. And now I don't have any parking requirement.
Yes and no, but actually I think what might happen, I could see a scenario where I don't want to, let's say I have minimum parking for the housing, but I still want to provide some parking for the housing. And then I could use parking jointly with the business and the housing. I could take advantage of that, of that interaction. And, and so the business would not get everything it wants. And the tenants of the residential portion might not get everything that they want, but there would still be a workable sum in there that works for everybody, a reasonable compromise.
I mean, I still like, I, I don't want to go, I mean, I think 75% is still high, right? I think if we limit the required parking to the current code requirement for the use, the specific commercial use, that is the simplest approach because it gets to what Commissioner Tolkien is getting at, which is I want to, I want to have creativity to solve a design problem. But if, I mean, if we're talking about having to replace 50 spaces, then you create the incentive that the chair is worried about, which is, you know, knocking down the building and going else because the subterranean parking is way too expensive. But if all you have to do is figure out like four or five spaces, you can, you could probably, I mean, we saw that, that creativity on Broadway with Superfit or whatever they were called, where they were kind of reached, they, they figured out a way to get those spaces in there legitimately and got what they needed. And we didn't have to compromise on the commercial side of the parking code, meaning we're not driving cars into neighborhoods and, and making people walk three blocks to get to a doctor's office. But we're, we're also allowing that.
I think we have four, we have four commissioners who are solid in their, in their direction. The only thing that we're missing now is a final, is a final percentage. So let's, let's, let's just cut to the, I mean, I just think we need to call, call the question of what that percentage is going to be.
I move 75%.
Okay. And I see Jing raising her hand. So maybe we're still missing some other aspect here.
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to raise, just so the commission is aware as you're discussing this, that there may be instances, because our code is old and we have a lot of old buildings, that this, this concept of the lesser of existing parking or what they were required as part of entitlements, there may be instances where you have buildings that had zero parking at entitlements. And if, I just want to make sure the commission, that that is understood and that we intend in those circumstances that in theory, then there would be no replacement parking. Because the lesser would be zero.
Well, if that's the case, Jing, then, then they get swept into the pile of the state determining that no parking is required for any business. They're already there. They're already part of no requirement parking for any business. So we can't help them and we can't hurt them, you know?
Okay. Yeah, just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Okay. Well, I saw Commissioner Tolkien's hand up again and then vice chair.
Let me just, there's, there's a little example on Fifth Street. Trader Joe's located in a, in a new residential apartment building or condo, a condo or it's an apartment building. Well, they had an arrangement of parking in the subterranean area. It was so bizarre that Trader Joe's closed their store and, and finished with it. So the market forces will determine, I mean, if I'm renting and leasing some space and it's not working, I'm going to get out of there. So the developer has the, will have to have the smarts to do it properly so that his tenants are, are have sufficient parking.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Tolkien. I, I'm saying this a little tongue in cheek. Can you tell me that the, the Trader Joe's that's in the bottom of that broad, new Broadway project has, has gone away?
It's gone away.
Because my son goes, my son tells me three days a week, he goes to work there.
That's what I, I was told they've gone away.
No, it's, it's, it's still, I'm pretty sure it's still active.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. I'm glad I don't have to talk to my son about that. You scared him. What has he been doing?
I was told, I was told by the people that Trader Joe's are no longer there.
No, they, they, they had a bogus kind of validation system that worked on wifi and nobody get wifi down there and that went away. Is my understanding, but.
Okay.
The use is still there. Okay. So look, we're at 75%.
I just wanted to add one little thing. I was thinking about what Jing just interjected. And if a build, if a business opened at a time when there was no required parking, but they had parking and then the new development comes and then they get zero parking, that's not achieving the goal we wanted.
They had, if they had parking, they have to.
But it wasn't required at the time of their entitlement, it's still 75%. Required at the time of their entitlement, it's still seventy-five percent of nothing.
Well, I.
That's all, wanted to point that out. You know, I'm thinking about really old businesses like, uh, you know, some of those old paint stores on uh, Wilshire. You know, places like that. I mean, they've been there for forty years. They might not be there that much longer anyway because, you know, they might be ready to retire.
Well, can I? But hang on, if it's seventy-five percent of what seventy-five percent of current code. Right, hang on, I think it might not go to zero, because if it's seventy-five percent of current code, right, it's, it's, Mario, are you thinking Mario, seventy-five percent of what's there or seventy-five percent of what's currently required?
I'm saying seventy-five percent of what's there.
Okay, so if it's seventy-five percent of what's there, or. Or, or. Code requires, it will not go to zero.
Okay.
Not vesting Jing, not what they were entitled, what the current code is.
Yeah, you, you, you made it really clear, let's not muddy it with, I like where you.
Yeah, go for it, let's go for that, that's the one we want.
Right, that's the, let's go.
Okay, alright.
Are you, you understand, we're saying current code, not entitlement?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, where are we going next? I think we're at eight. Lost my, lost my notes here, help me out. Somewhere, we're going to ADUs next, I think? Or no, parking.
Question five, yeah, so this is about, um, so state law uh, says that eighty, you have to provide one space, uh, parking requirement, except no parking is required in eighties within half mile of public transit, so this is different than a major transit stop. This is where there is transit. There are bus stops all over the city, so you can see that this covers the entire city.
Is anybody gonna fight this? I mean, this is what, let's, let's just make this.
Okay, yeah, it's fine, let's move on. That's the funniest map I've ever seen.
And then on the next one Jing, I'm gonna ask you a question before you start explaining it. When we say about parking in the, in the R1, are we allowing a hundred percent of the front yard parking or, or a portion of the front?
This would allow parking in the front step back, um, if the existing curb cut is retained, so it's, it's conditional, it's like, you know, it's not like you can just park on your lawn or just wherever you want. Um, this would be in a case, typically what we see is like, you know, they have a garage, you know, that takes access um, from the front and there's a curb cut on the street, but they convert that garage uh, to an ADU. And uh, normally our code required, you know, that where your driveway does not lead to a um, a parking space since parking is not allowed in the front yard set back currently, you need to close that curb cut. So this question is, should we allow in those cases where, you know, an ADU has been established and you need to relocate the parking? Um, you know, could that parking be relocated to the front yard setback? Um, if there's already existing curb cut there, so you can't make a new one, it has to be there already. And if the parking space uh, meets our um, our, our design and, you know, standards for, for parking spaces.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna, Commissioner Landers, just in a second, but I still wanna just kinda nail my question. I could have the same curb cut and there could be one spot going straight in in front of the new ADU, but then I could carve off to the right and put another parking space. Are you allowed, would we be allowed to do that? That's what I would not be really excited about.
Well, actually.
Address um, kind of.
Hold on, hold on. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi, if you have a comment on this particular issue, go ahead.
What I was saying, we have specific front yard landscape requirements. So you couldn't just pave over your whole front yard and stick a, a used car lot there. Uh, so so that would be some action to prevent that from happening.
Yeah, that, that's correct. It's, it's not a landscape require, uh, limit, it's actually a paving limitation. So you can only have so much paving on your front yard.
Yeah, but then I could use decomposed granite or something, didn't I?
Exactly.
Well, there's always ways that people cheat, but I'm saying the intent was there.
Yeah, the intent was for you to use your existing driveway, not exactly expand upon it all.
We should be more clear about that. Go ahead, Commissioner Landers.
Thank you. So I, I, first of all, I wanna say um, to Ross and, and to Tony that I wish I could give you six months of your life back, um, because we litigated this in the R1 redesign four years ago. Um, so I'm so terribly sorry that we're back where we were. Um, but I do think that uh, what we went through there was that we were, if I remember correctly, the old, old code said you had to have a garage, you had to put your car in your garage and that was that. And our radical move at that moment, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mario and Nina, was that we said, no, you can bring your car as far forward as your house front line, right, the front of your building. Yeah, right, your facade. So now, to be, just to be really clear, what we are being asked is to permit parking it between the facade and the sidewalk, yes?
Yeah, but sure, only, only if you're displacing it through the establishment of an ADU. Not, we wouldn't allow that in every circumstance.
Right, so what I would say is, the, the question that I would pose to colleagues is that we had at that time, quite a long conversation about carports. Um, right, so that it looked like it was on purpose and not, uh, you know, and we ultimately said, no, we're not gonna, we're not fussing over a carport, you just have to put the car behind, um, behind the facade. I'm fine with this proposal, cause I think it's consistent with state requirements and, you know, notwithstanding the ability of somebody to place their car on DG in front of their house, which I don't love either, but um, it's sort of what you can do on your private property, so we all oughta kinda just deal with it.
Uh, and I'm, I'm inclined to agree with that because the really scary thing is, this is what people are already doing most of the time. They're not driving down that narrow little driveway to get to that tiny little garage that was made for a Model T. Most people are parking in their front, front yard setback on their driveway.
Well, to add to that, I, the home in which I grew up, um, it turned out that the lot line was misplaced and the, the, the garage is no longer accessible from the street. It's not even that they, they can't, if they want to, get to their garage.
Right, I think we can move on.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I just hope that we don't see a car lot right in the front, but anyways, okay, you've got directions now. And then I think we're we're looking at what we have is, la, 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 it's, this is community benefits. Do we have any comments on the community benefits section? Anybody?
Uh, yeah, just to review, we're just uh, applying the uniform unit mix requirement here. Um, that's not different, we're deleting the average bedroom factor standard. Um, and then aligning the unit mix percentage for affordable units with market rate, just like, you know, everywhere else and HPP and what have you, so.
So this is, this resolves the issues that Ms. Larmour raised in her late letter. She was concerned about consistency and.
Maybe, yeah, I, I didn't get a chance to fully read it cause it came.
Yeah, the staff report, yeah, the staff report was incorrect and so this PowerPoint presentation slide here shows that we've corrected that that community benefits chapter does apply to um, basically tier two housing projects cause we still do have tiers in the R3 and R4 zones. Um, since we don't have a tier system for housing projects or we're proposing to eliminate the tier system for housing projects in the, in the non-residential zones, it wouldn't apply to housing projects, so it's, as, as I said before, it's like the fifty-fifty projects you would get.
Okay.
Any other commission discussion about the community benefit change? Nina?
Um, I thought it's on the same page in my staff report, I don't know if it's actually part of the same question, but uh, about not allowing single unit houses in multi-unit zones, is that now?
That is in the next one, SB uh, four seventy-eight, yeah, you can move on to that if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm actually not in favor of that just because of the idea of diversity. And that even though it means that somebody could in theory build fewer units. I think, I guess it has to do with my personal vision of housing equity and that the reason R1 isn't a fair zone is because it codifies exclusion and privilege. And people can do what they want if they have enough money. And I think that we should not I, I just feel like if we're really saying that R1 is not a fair zone in a lot of ways, then we should allow single family unit uh, homes in multi-unit zones because it is diversity. And diversity doesn't mean only the people who are excluded, it means all the people. So that's, I know that's kind of convoluted, but I think that would also potentially lead to a better more interesting and varied streetscape if somebody ever did it, which I doubt they would.
Right.
If, if we could provide just a little bit of background as to how we came to that recommendation. Cause we sort of noodle on, noodle on this a bit, um, given the state law. Uh, basically what happened in the red lines is that we, for ease of implementation, we ended up increasing parcel coverage um, in these zones and you can see there, so it would apply not only to these three to seven unit projects, they take ten units, but you know, we would capture two unit projects in there. The consequence of allowing single unit dwellings here is that you may have a situation where somebody demolishes an existing small single unit dwelling and builds a bigger one, bigger than even what you could build in the R1 zone. Um, so if you did want to allow single unit dwellings um, in multi-unit zones, and, and again, I think we have a little bit of concern about, you know, promoting underdevelopment in our multi-unit districts, um. You know, we would probably need to come up with a additional parcel coverage standard for single unit dwellings in the multi-unit zones, otherwise you're gonna end up with, um, I think it's the, we have like forty-five percent as the maximum parcel coverage in R1 for new home construction and the R2 would be, um, you know, fif- fifty or fifty-five, I can't recall what we fit fifty percent, so it would be bigger. Here, we didn't want to incentivize, you know, that, that kind of redevelopment.
That makes a lot of sense, you know, um. I don't think that's even unprecedented in the city that, I, you know, I just, of course, my long experience is in landmarks and uh, when uh, back in the day, there was a time when if an R1, if a single unit dwelling was in a multi-unit zone and they wanted to do something to it, it had to go to ARB. And uh, the code was changed to make sure that uh, if, because it was a single unit dwelling, that it should uh, not go to ARB and that, that it was an exemption even though it was in a multi-unit zone. And so I think that kind of sets a stage for allowing R1 kinds of standards uh, to apply in these multi-unit zones as well.
Commissioner Landers and then Fonda Bernardi.
I am, I agree with staff, I support the prohibition on single unit dwellings. Um, but as a compromise, because I see where Commissioner Fresco is coming from. Um, that is the kind of thing that I might wanna prohibit during the term of this housing element. For this cycle. And uh, come back to it, have it sunset the end of the cycle. Um, because I think we're in a housing emergency and I think we need to stop the single unit dwellings from being developed in R2 for all the reasons that staff said. But I would be comfortable with having that sunset at the end of the housing element and having that conversation have to be revisited ahead of the next housing element.
That's an interesting idea. And then we might also know what they're doing.
Exactly.
Responded to, cause it's kind of an unknown idea.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Uh, well, let me follow up on, on sort of approaching this from a slightly different direction. First of all, this is a very rare event, very few people are gonna make uh, you know, a single family dwelling in a multi-family zone. What might happen would be to have, when two small apartments, someone might join them together and would actually be getting a slightly bigger home than they could ever afford buying it in the R1 district. You know, so it's, it's a very rare event, but I would like to speak to the question of diversity. If you look at Ocean Park, most people like Ocean Park cause it is so diverse. There's three-star buildings, two-star buildings, duplexes, all these different types of buildings, all scattered up and down the hills. And you say, well, what does it take to create that kind of diversity? Well, only about twenty percent of the buildings in Ocean Park are in fact, single family homes. The rest of them are duplexes, triplexes and even larger buildings. So what I'm saying is introducing a sprinkling of a single family homes here and there is like a little bit of salt, a little bit of salt in the fabric of our, our streetscape. Otherwise, we're heading for a world of econo-boxes, which is fine to meet our Rita numbers, but it's not fine in term of our experience of our neighborhoods. It's such a small thing, I wouldn't even spend time on it, I would just eliminate it. And I like the idea of coming back later, but you and I know realistically, unless we're still there saying, hey, wait, wait, you forgot to bring back that last thing that we were gonna talk about eight years from now, when this housing element comes back around, I think it's better to slay the dragon now before it gets, you know, out of our hands.
So what are you saying?
I'm saying, uh, for, remove the prohibition, let nature do its thing and it'll provide us some interesting diversity in the rare events that it happens, very rare event.
I agree, I agree. Commissioner Tolkien?
I agree.
Raskin? Commissioner Raskin?
I'm in favor of the prohibition though, I've been spinning around in my mind if there are situations where there's a really, really small R2 parcel, they can really only accommodate a single family dwelling, but um, I imagine that's gonna be a rare case.
Can I ask, can we do a size requirement? Could we prohibit them on parcels above a certain size? So that we can't get, what, what Jing is worried about is people being able to mansionize above and beyond what they would get on an R1 parcel. And so who, yeah.
I don't know, I was just gonna say, you love, you love to try to create middle ground and compromise, but it's creating more, more problems, I think, and we have four, we have a, 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 four people saying that they wanna, they wanna get rid of that prohibition, not make edits to it.
Um, would anybody be open to a parcel size limitation for this? Allow the single, you know, if you have the, the occasional small to mid-sized parcel in OP2 or R2 where you could legitimately have a comparably sized single unit dwelling, fine, but you prevent it on the larger parcels, so you don't get mansionization.
I like the sunset idea better frankly.
Okay.
I, my, you know, I mean, I'm thinking about my recent visit to San Francisco and how you're on this giant boulevard and there's all these commercial buildings and yes, it's an old predating single family home, but it really makes for an interesting streetscape just to see what people do in different spots, you know, and to have that certain amount of freedom.
Uh, cause I, I genuinely, I mean respectfully disagree with Commissioner Fonda Bernardi. I do think there are people who would come in and mansionize uh, to, if they could get a mansion on a budget. I do think those folks exist and they should have a right to do with their money what they want, but we're in a housing crisis and I wanna disincentivize. Let them do that on a, on an existing larger parcel. Or smaller, you know, in R1, not in R2. I'm, I'll be the minority on this, it's okay.
Yeah, I think, I, I think you are, I think you are. So we're, we're gonna move forward with, we're gonna recommend striking that prohibition from. Yeah, I think, I, I think you are. I think you are. So we're, we're gonna move forward with, we're gonna recommend striking that prohibition from the, the red lines. Any other comments on that, on the SB four seventy-eight? Okay. Staff, what have we not given you an earful about that you need to hear about?
I, I'm just double checking with the team. I think we covered everything, though. Um, I was just.
I think we're good, Jane, on, on my end.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. If we're done with everything on the list, I, there's some cleanup stuff on our parking red lines. I'd like to screen through these. These are very quick questions. Um, and, uh, if you don't mind, can I do that?
Nope, go right ahead.
This, this is a question for, for Jing, uh, or Planner. Um, we have a chart that shows some excluded areas when calculating the areas of buildings in terms of parking. There are so many things. You subtract this, you can subtract garages, you can subtract bicycle parking. But we have one list that has six items in one part of the code and one list that has eleven items in another part of the code. And those two should exist all in one place. Otherwise, people are gonna be doing different area calculations. You see, see where I'm going with that?
Can you specify like a page or something that you're looking at that would be?
Four. Page four of the parking, uh, the recent, the staff parking report. I guess it was in a pen. Okay.
Talking about the, the attachment? Nine point two eight? Okay.
Yeah. So on page four, you have a list of six area exclusions. And then on, uh, section nine point oh four, point oh eight of the code, of the current code, you have eleven exclusions. And the question is, why do we have these two charts that are sort of pointing in different directions for the same topic, for the same issue of how do you calculate the required parking?
I think the more important part is, you're, you're just saying, let's create consistency and have it in one place.
Yeah, otherwise, some people are gonna use one chart, some people are gonna use the other chart, they're gonna end up with different numbers.
I see page four. Where is it on page? Page four, I see exclusions and six, and where's the other one?
Okay, there's six exclusion there. Then you have to go to the real code, the actual current code. And in the real code, you have things like stairwells come out, elevators come out, mechanic spaces come out. All this other stuff comes out in calculating parking or areas. And so question is, what? We should put those together. This is, this is really bookkeeping. It's like, it's not really policy, it's bookkeeping. Or spell check. I don't know what you would call it for.
A missing red line is.
Right. Uh, then, uh, so on page seven, still going down this list, it's a little bit of the same problem where you have a chart A and a chart B, but it's unclear why those are two separate charts. Is there one thing that's doing one thing for one area and one thing, this is for the minimum parking requirements?
I, I think with planning commission's direction tonight, a lot of those confusion and the different charts will actually be a lot more simplified. So, but we'll definitely take a look at those.
Uh, and then on page twenty-two, you have a, a requirement that compact cars can't be within twenty-five feet of driveways. Is there some reason that compact cars are toxic to driveways or vice versa, whereas real full-size cars are not? Is there some, something, it's there in the red lines, but it's unclear, um, what, what that's, what that's really doing for us.
So that's a current standard? We weren't proposing to change that.
Well, if it's current and we're changing these parts of the code, I'm just trying to understand why do we have that? What, what, what's the purpose of that?
So, so I'm not sure that's necessarily within the ROI's, um, but we can take a look at that. And then also just very briefly, broadly, um, uh, appreciate these comments. We're gonna look at them, but just so the commission understands, um, these red lines are based on um, the code as it stood when, um, this red line process started. Um, which was, you know, back last year, actually. So changes have been made to the code, which we will be integrating, um, also into the final product. And we will also be, be doing these sorts of reviews um, in order to put together, um, you know, ordinances that can be presented to the city council. So um, I just wanted to clarify that, um, you know, these are draft red lines. Um, we are working to put together the, the, the product that would be, um, you know, ready for council to, to adopt, um, you know, as an ordinance. So um, rest assured, uh, we're listening to this piece, but it is also something that we are, are doing as part of our process. We're getting everything ready.
Okay. Last question I have, uh, yeah, I thought we had eliminated the number of units that if you had a lot of a certain size, you could only go up to a certain number of units. I thought we had eliminated that in the R2, R3, you know, in those, in those conversion situations.
Uh, where's that? I'm not, is that parking now or whatever? Are we talking about something else?
To multiple family units. We had a whole, uh, thing on multiple hap- family zoning, multiple. On page five, we still have maximum unit, you can, you can only get four, four units out of something, you know, or five units out of something. I thought we eliminated that.
I, I, I'm sorry. I'm not sure what you're looking at, actually.
Well, they, okay, page five in the multiple family, uh, department, off the.
Oh, sorry. And I know, okay, it's attachment. Sorry, I, I thought we were still on parking. Let me go.
No. Ask the question I had.
Which attachment is that?
There was an attachment that had to do with multiple, multiple unit housing, you know, multiple family housing.
So I, I think, um, you're referencing the density caps. We're not proposing to remove the density caps in the multi-unit zones. It's only for those surface parking lots that are in the multi-unit zones. Because we didn't want to encourage the displacement of existing residential uses. So we're only removing the caps if you're redeveloping a surface parking lot in those zones.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll have to dig it up. Maybe I'll, I'll get back to you if there's anything, if there's, I'm understanding it correctly.
Okay. Great. Okay, um, we're, we're last, last opportunities to comment. Anything else people wanna bring up at this point? I'm sorry, Commissioner Landers, I was looking.
Yeah, it's actually just the process. Is the agenda for the eleventh such that if we go really long, we can finish on the eighteenth, or are we gonna finish on the, I mean?
Yes, we heard, we heard your desire to have that as an overflow. I, I, I think we, we got your direction on agenda setting.
Okay.
Um, last time. So, you know, we'll work with, uh, we're, we're, we're working on sort of, you know, the agenda wording to sort of give you the opportunity to do that.
Thank you very much. I'm also just thinking that we might get more public comment on the eleventh that gets into this type of technical work. Um, and, you know, you may wanna take an extra, we may need to come back with fixes, you know, vote up in front of us before we vote.
Yeah. Well, let's hope that, I mean, I'm always open to new discussion, but we've had a lot of opportunities for fo- folks and us to discuss. So let's see how it goes. And again, staff, to the extent you can get it to us more than a week in ahead, be awesome. Again, don't know that you're able to. So I'm gonna put nine eight to bed. Move on to ten, which is public comment on non-agendized items. If we get staff to put up a one-minute timer for us, let's see if we pick up a comment. Appreciate that.
We did not receive any calls.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. I wanna thank everybody for a lot of hard, detailed work tonight. We have, we still have some hurdles in front of us, but we've, we've done a lot of work and I appreciate everyone's attention to it. Have a great evening and we will actually have a happy holidays and we'll see you next year.
Yeah, wish the commission an enjoyable holiday season and we will see. And thank you for your work in 2022.
You too. Find some time to enjoy your family. Goodbye, everybody.
Bye.
Happy New Year.